This is the special call meeting of the Franklin County Fiscal Court via video teleconferencing for October the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We welcome all of you. And tonight, to begin our meeting, we're going to be led with the invocation from Father Peter Donama from the Church of the Ascension. And welcome, Father. Thank you for being here. And thank you so much for your invocation in leading us in a fruitful, thoughtful meeting.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may elect trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, and send down upon those who hold office in this county the spirit of wisdom, charity, justice, that with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Amen.
And Father, thank you for that. And we appreciate all the members of the Church of Ascension and what the Church does to make our community better. Thank you so much to all. All right. With that being said, the first item on the agenda is October is a special month, and it's domestic violence awareness. And we have Scott Hanson on. Scott, you're our victim advocate, and we appreciate it. Scott, if you don't mind, I'll start off by reading the proclamation that we have for you, and then I'd like for you to say a few words. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. This is a proclamation from the judge to Franklin County to all whom these present shall come, whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, sexual orientation, and income levels. And whereas domestic violence is widespread, on an average, nearly twenty people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States, which equates to more than ten million women and men per year. Wow. Whereas one in fifteen children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year, and ninety percent of these children are eyewitnesses to this violence. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court calls, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy for services and assistance to victims. Now, therefore, I, Houston Wells, Franklin County Judge Executive, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Franklin County, and urge the citizens of Franklin County to work together to eliminate domestic violence in our community. Thank you, Scott, and for what you do. And wow, those are staggering thoughts and stats.
Yes, yes, I agree, Judge. Thank you very much. And those statistics are national statistics, but I just want to give you an idea of something that was alarming to me just this week. In Franklin County, we have our Domestic Violence Court on Wednesdays. So yesterday, we had nineteen hearings. We had nineteen petitions that Judge Williams heard, asking him to enter an order of protection against someone. That was a record for Franklin County. That's the most that Judge Williams remembers. That's the most I've ever heard. In our community, right now, as we fight this pandemic, we are seeing victims facing the added pressures of increased economic uncertainty, increased time and isolation against their abuse with their abusers, and limited contact with their support systems. These barriers make it more difficult for victims to seek help, and violence is increasing because of those same added stressors. I talked about this last year. We're in the same place. I don't know. It's probably getting worse. The violence is just increasing, and domestic violence is just getting worse. I encourage each of you to report domestic violence, to provide support for anyone in abusive relationships within your own families, with your friends, and your workplace, anywhere where you see it. But we must also teach our children about healthy relationships at home and in our schools. Support the local service providers, and then get involved in any way that you can. But always, if you can call me, if you need anything, if you have any questions, you need direction, or you just want to send some to someone to me, just reach out. Don't hesitate to call.
Scott, would you mind giving your number if you're asking if people will call you?
Sure. So you can reach me in my office at five oh two eight seven five eight seven one two. And my office cell phone, or my work cellphone is five oh two three nine five three seven eight zero. I encourage people to give out my work cellphone as much as possible because a lot of times for victims, it's easier to text than it is to call. Don't hesitate to get those out.
And Scott, you mentioned that report abuse. Would they report it to you, or who would they report abuse to?
You can report it to me. In domestic violence situations, oftentimes, just call the police if you see it. Don't hesitate. You can send someone out for a welfare check. The police can go to a home and just do a welfare check. You know, they can, they can just knock on the door and ask someone if they're okay. And that can just save somebody's life. If they're not able to call and ask for help, sending someone out just to, just to check on someone may be the only opportunity they have to ask for help.
All right. Are there any questions for Scott on this matter that's hugely important? Scott, I don't see any questions. Thank you so much. God bless you. And what you do is so important to our community. Thank you.
Thanks for having me, Judge.
Sure. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Mr. Hancock. Welcome. You've got two or three things. First is going to be election update. You've got a special new chief deputy that you want to introduce to us, and then you might as well go on into your quarterly report. So Mr. Hancock, welcome.
Yeah, Judge, thank you for having us. And of course, I look forward to the day when we're all back in person. I know that right now with the numbers going the way they're going, this is the safest option. But I want to thank you all for being here today and giving us the opportunity to talk with you. I want to first start, I got three things that I need to go over. I know that one of them's down on the fifth agenda item. But I do have a daughter that's having senior night tonight. So I apologize. I want to go ahead and go over those. I want to start with my introduction. Today, what I'd like to do is introduce to you our new chief deputy. My new chief deputy is Mitzi Jepin. She comes to us from the state government world. She's worked in all three branches of government. She was working for the Department of Community Based Services, and I look forward to her.
Hang on, Jeff. Hang on. John Mitchell, I believe you're coming through. Can you mute John Mitchell, please? All right. Thank you, Jeff. Apologize.
No, no worries. No worries. I look forward to working with Mitzi. She has a lot of leadership skills. She's worked in Otter's Office. I think her overall view of government, and it's in entirety, will be great for county government. I'm glad that we were able to entice her to come over into the county government life. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over and let her say hello.
There you go. Hey, Mitzi, welcome.
Hi there. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. And good afternoon, everybody. I'm really excited to be here. Like Jeff just said, I come from a state government background, but I'm really looking forward to having an impact here at the clerk's office, working with our dedicated staff, and getting involved more in our community here in Frankfurt. And coming from the world of Department for Community-Based Services, working in the Commissioner's Office, I just want to say thank you so much to Scott for her message this evening. I don't think we can over-communicate that. It's very important. So with that, I just want to invite you guys, please come by the clerk's office, say hello, introduce yourself. And if there's any way that I can be of help to you all, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Mitzi, welcome. We're so excited that you're here, and you are working with a fantastic group of people in the clerk's office that are there on the front line. As you see, as you can tell, they're right on the front line, and they're, they're doing a fantastic job.
Absolutely.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Jeff, you want to do your quarterly report? And a little update on election?
Well, let's talk about elections first. Guys, the elections, about two weeks ago, an article came out in the State Journal that a building that we know as the old plant board building was going to be utilized for an arts, community arts program. And what, first thing I must say is the county clerk's office and county government as a whole loves community art. We want to see it flourish, but we also have to have a location to be able to do elections. So when I saw this article come out, I was very concerned that we weren't going to have a place to have an election headquarters. I will tell you, I did start making phone calls. I had an absolutely wonderful phone call with Laura Heck, the city manager. We have got a meeting set for October the nineteenth. She is assuring me that we can correct this problem, and that we will be able to use the building. She even thinks that we'll probably be able to improve on it. I don't know, what I've asked for from our office, from the county clerks, and hopefully through the county itself, is that we can get some type of mutual lease agreement or something where we can have a long-term use of that building for elections. It's in a really nice location. It's walking distance from our office here. It provides parking. It provides security. It provides, it chucks off a lot of boxes that we need to do a successful election. As you all know, elections are no longer a one-day process. When elections were a one-day process, we could do it all right here. But the way that elections have changed, we no longer have that option. Elections now last sixty days. We have forty-five days of mail-in voting. We have a fifteen-day deadline period. Then we have four days of early in-person voting and an election day. To pull all this off, we just can't do it from the clerk's office alone. So with that being said, I do feel really good about my conversation with the new city manager of our egg. If something does change, and we will not be able to use that building, I will be coming back to you all. We have to find a location. If this is not an acceptable location, and we can't find a term or a use to be able to pull this off, I'll be coming back to the court and saying, guys, we have to find a location to do this. So as of right now, I thought that's what I was coming to tell you today, that we were going to have to find a new location. Thank goodness that Laura has taken the phone call, and once again, I have a meeting on October the nineteenth. I welcome, if any of you all would like to join and come along and see what I'm talking about, see the location, I'm going to meet over there. You're more than welcome to join. You're more than welcome to give me some questions that you might have. But right now, I think we just need to wait and make sure of what we've got. I know the election season seems like it's a long way away, guys, but it's not. Balling deadline starts November the third, ends January the seventh, and our elections take off running at that point. I'm sure you have some questions about that. I do need a little bit of, I need a little bit of guidance from you guys. At one point, we had talked about budgeting. We had talked about the clerk's office paying for all the elections upfront, instead of you all paying for the election workers and the locations, the clerk's office funding the entire bill and putting it in the budget. Right now, we're in the process of developing our budget, and I need to know guidance-wise, do you want me to put all of the election cost for two thousand and twenty? And remember, I run calendar years. I do not run fiscal years like you guys. So do you want me to put all of the budget year for all of the elections in this budget? Or do you all want me to do the old style of elections that we've had, where you all paid for the election workers, the locations, and stuff like that? I'll stop there because I've said a lot, and see if anybody has any questions.
Jeff, if you don't mind, let me bring Susan on, see what she has to say about that. Because I haven't talked with Susan about that. I've just, I've heard you talk about it. You and I have discussed it. But Susan, do you have a thought on that? Susan Lawrenson?
Yeah, my initial thought is that we continue to do it the way we are, with the clerk in charge of making all the arrangements and obligations, and keeping us informed about what those vendor obligations are. So just because of the disconnect between the calendar and the fiscal years, we can, I can talk with Jeff a little bit more about that and give it a little bit more thought, but that's my gut reaction right now.
Okay. Squire Tracy?
Thanks, Judge. Jeff, thanks for being here. Mitzi, thanks for being here. Jeff, quick question. Would it be your desire to, obviously, to keep that main hub of the voting section in downtown?
Scotty, that's a two-part question, because you got to remember, this time I'm opening a second location for in-person early voting, out on the largest corridor of travel, along with the largest corridor of people out off of Sals Road.
Right.
I think it makes the most sense to keep it in downtown Frankfurt, where it's walking distance from my office, for coordinating elections and running votes and running paperwork back and forth, along with utilizing the post office. It is a very convenient location.
Okay. And then second question in regards to the, your, the voting election cost. What would be your preference?
I don't know that I have a preference at this point, Scotty. I just need to know for budgeting purposes, because it averages where the county right now is covering approximately, you know, forty-five thousand dollars an election, and there's two per cycle. So it's, you know, roughly ninety thousand dollars. It's not that we have the money, and a lot of counties, the county clerk doesn't have the money, and that's why elections were designed that way. We're going to give that back to you, at least that, if not more, in excess fees. So it's, it's the preference of the county. What, how do the county foresee?
Okay. Thank you.
Squire Muller?
Thank you, Judge. Computer's acting up on me today. Jeff, thanks for being here. Mitzi, thank you, and welcome. Jeff, you just said ninety thousand. Is that your estimated of what this election is going to cost the county?
Absolutely not, Squire Miller. It's going to be way more than that. Your all's general cost is nothing more than the election workers, and the locations, and where we have it. This election costs more than that. We have ballots. We have ballot setup. We have design work. We have extra staffing that we have to bring in to do the mailing. I'm assuming this election to be on the upper side of, for a full cycle. Let's talk full cycles. Talking about a May through, a May and a November primary and a general, I'm assuming it to be around between two fifty and three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. That's, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Anyone else? What is, is, what's the pleasure of the court on whether Jeff puts it all? You've heard Susan say she'd like to keep it in our budget.
Well, Judge, I really would like an opportunity to discuss it more in depth with the clerk about the process.
Okay.
For us, I mean.
All right. All right. We'll take, we'll just not even talk about it, until you've, you all had a chance to discuss.
Yeah.
I think that's a very fair statement.
Okay. Good deal. All right. Jeff, your quarterly report now?
Quarterly report. If you're looking at the quarterly report, and you're looking at the entire totals, right now, our bank-to-book balance is nine hundred and forty-eight thousand seven ninety-one. I will tell you, that still has a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of obligated obligation that we have not taken out of. That's that part where I did the full scanning and back imaging. That gets us back past nineteen eighty-four for all deeds. Deeds, mortgages, Platts, everything that's in my office back past ninety-four is now scanned. Anybody will be able to search that from their house. If you're a private residence of Franklin County, you can get on my website, and you can go through and search it. If you're a commercial use, you can get on and use the e-click system. You have to pay for it. But remember, I need to emphasize, commercial use. They're using it to make profit. So it's, this is, we are getting where we need to be. It's going to cost us this year. It's going to cost us next year. But eventually, every record in Franklin County will be online and obtainable, from marriage license all the way through everything that we have.
Great job.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? Squire Moore?
Yeah, Jeff, does this online, does this make it easier for people to hack into our lives and disrupt our finances?
You know, I, I think that's a fair question, Squire Moore. And I will say this, absolutely. And these are things that people have asked for, and asked for, and asked for, and they want to make it easier. When you make it easier, you also make it easier for bad actors.
Yeah. Be careful what you ask for, I always say.
I will say this, though. The, our third-party provider that provides the software, that provides the interlet portal, does not make it an easy process. It is not, and unfortunately, the good actors, it's hard on them, too. But the bad actors, it's not an easy process. And if they do it more than once, they're going to get flagged. And if they're doing it from multiple locations, they're going to get flagged, and they're going to get kicked out of the system. But does it make it easier for bad actors? Absolutely.
That's good to know. Any other questions for, for Mr. Hancock? All right. Most importantly, we wish your daughter well tonight.
Thank you.
I hope Polly does well, and it shines greatly.
Thank you very much.
And I know you're proud, and those of us that know her know what a great, great girl she is. We're proud of, all proud of her.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Judge, can I have one half a second?
Yes, sir.
I want to bring up, there are three articles in the newspaper, the counties, the cities, and the plant boards. They came to us without any notice. I will tell you guys, I'm trying to figure out, and I saw an email go around today. I have not talked to anybody on it, but a compensation study is probably needed. I've got people in here that are working, and they should not be at a disadvantage because they came to the county instead of the city, or they came to the county instead of the plant board. I don't know that they're disadvantaged, but it sure doesn't look right in the paper when one's making ten, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars more. So I encourage you all to think about that. I haven't talked to anybody on this. This is not a political run. This is not me doing anything. This is me saying, it's hard when your employees are looking at you going, I've been here fifteen years, and I'm making twenty percent less. So I really hope that you all will consider doing some type of compensation study, because me, I'm not capable of it. I can take it and try to look across it, but that is well outside of my forte. So I hope you all will think about that. Guys, I appreciate everything you all do. I know you work hard. Thank you for giving me the liberty to say so.
All right, Jeff. Thank you very much. Thanks for those words, too. All right. Are any other questions for Jeff? Okay. Thanks. All right. The next item on the agenda is United Way presentation. We have Betty, would you like to start and introduce Mr. Cremmons? I'll let you do it, or we can let Mr. Cremmons go first. Betty Jo?
All right. Why don't I, why don't I go ahead and jump in?
She'll be on in a second. Okay.
Yeah, no. In fairness to Betty Jo, we, I think we did some musical chairs on you all in terms of who would be, who would be here presenting. So I'm very happy to have been, to have been chosen and have the opportunity to speak to everyone. Again, my name is Gary Cremmons. I'm the Director of Programs at United Way of the Bluegrass. I've been with United Way since two thousand and thirteen. And, you know, we're very excited to be in a position to serve Franklin County and to move forward with working with some of the really amazing service providers and nonprofits in Franklin County, doing some great work. Very happy to be in a position to support them going forward. This is, it's been a big year for, for United Way of the Bluegrass. It's our centennial. So we have a hundred years in central Kentucky, providing services and funding organizations, providing critical needs and services to those who need them most. We have recently, just in the past year, really been able to enact a strategic change in how we conduct our business. We realized that we needed to find a way to drive a little deeper impact, particularly in the neighborhoods in our, in our ten-county service region that are in the most need. So we, we did a, our own internal study, discovered the county, the neighborhoods, right down to the census tract level in each county, that were living in the highest levels of poverty. And we changed our model a little bit to where we have established what we're calling waypoint centers. So it's an actual physical presence in these neighborhoods where we can be there. We have personnel in those centers, along with some of our funded agency partners, providing personnel to be there as well. That way, folks who live in these neighborhoods, who have transportation issues and many other issues, they can walk to these centers to receive the services and the help that they need. And it's not obviously unusual. Someone has one need, they're going to have multiple needs. So nobody ever comes into our waypoint center with just one need. They might need food. They might need rent assistance. They might need help with utilities. There's a range of things that are going on. And after a conversation, you find that out. So we're able to meet a lot of those needs in one spot, and folks don't have to drive all over town, or from one county to the next county, to be able to get the help that they need. And that's proving to be a real godsend. So far, we've opened three centers, one in the west end of Lexington, one in the east end of Lexington, and one in downtown Paris. And that's exactly what we're finding out, is it's been a real boon for folks, because they, you often lose people if they have to go from one place to another. Today, it takes a lot of time, transportation's an issue. So now, we can sort of meet their needs in one spot. And that's just, it's, it's exciting model for us. It's also scalable. The plan is to roll out two more waypoint centers per year over the next four years. Those will be in, we don't quite have the resources to do every county we serve, but we would like to do as many in, in counties that we serve in our service area beyond Fayette County going forward. So we've got the two in Fayette right now, and one in Bourbon. And we're looking at some other surrounding areas where we can be of great assistance. And also, I would just again point out the number of partner agencies that we are able to fund in Franklin County that are doing some great work, you know, places like Simon House, the King Center, Emergency Food Pantry, the Capital City Activity Center. There's a list of them on our website. I don't have them all in front of me. And I'd be happy to provide any further information if you're interested in, in what we're doing from a funding perspective in Franklin County. But there's, as you guys know, there's some folks doing some great work, and we're very pleased to be able to, to use the dollars that are generated through our campaign fund to fund those organizations. Um, the last two things I would I would mention. I'm not sure that a lot of people are aware of our our two one one call center. It's a human services and hotline referral. So it's two one one, just like you might call four one one or, you know, a nine one one. So we have trained, um, certified navigators, phone operators. And folks call that number. Our folks can connect them to the resources and the help that they need, no matter where they are. And we don't just serve central Kentucky with two one one. We actually serve ninety six of the hundred and twenty counties in Kentucky through United Way of the Bluegrass. And we're very happy to have been able to expand that program. And that's it's pretty remarkable, um, what the number of people that we're able to reach and provide services to, uh, via two one one. And the last thing I would mention, um, because it's really part of the programming that that I do. We have a, uh, a coalition for that provides a free tax preparation service. It's through a grant from the IRS. It's a volunteer income tax service. Um, our particular version of it's called Sea Keep, but we lead the coalition across, um, different regions in Kentucky. And anybody who meets a minimum income threshold can have their taxes done for free. And it's really critical because it's it's it costs a fair chunk of change to have your taxes done. So that's money that goes back into the pockets of these folks. And, uh, one of the things that we've discovered over the years, and the the IRS was well aware of, is about twenty five percent of folks who are eligible for the earned income tax credit don't pursue it because they don't realize that they're eligible for it. So those are all dollars that go back into families', um, pocketbooks and wallets, and it provides for the the economic development, financial stability of families across the Bluegrass region. So you know, that's just a taste, uh, of what we're doing. If anybody has any interest in in learning more about waypoint centers, um, about what we're doing with, uh, in terms of funded partners and and things like Sea Keep, uh, by all means, please reach out. We'd love to talk to you more about it and and give you more information. And again, thank you so much for giving me some time to speak with you today.
Okay, there are questions in just a moment. I'll let Betty Jo continue on and tell us, Betty, how, uh, as employees, how we can contribute to the United Way.
Yes, uh, currently, uh, we do offer payroll deductions, and, um, most employers not offering those right now, but we are. So even if you can give a dollar out of your paycheck, um, that would be greatly appreciated. So currently, the process is if you are already, um, giving in United Way, um, that change will will take the same to be a same amount in twenty twenty two. Um, if you would like to change the pledge, I sent out several correspondence, uh, explaining United Way and the merger and a lot of documents, and all you need to do is send that to Vicky and Payrow or myself. And those changes will take pledges in January. Currently, the county employees are distributing around six thousand dollars a year to United Way. So we're we're encouraging employer employees to even up that a dollar if if they can on their paycheck. That would be greatly appreciated.
Look it up.
And one last thing I should I should point out, I neglected to say that the the decisions on how those dollars are allocated are made by the Franklin County United Way Board of Trustees. So it's it's local folks making decisions about where those dollars go once they're collected. And I would be happy if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, well, that's, uh, uh, I'll open the floor to questions for either Betty Jo. Are you Mr. Cremmons? About United Way, are there any questions? I don't see any questions, but I would like to say that oh, there there's one, uh, Squire Sebastian.
Uh, yes, thank you, Judge. Uh, Mr. Cremmons, thank you so much for being on with us this evening. Um, how frequent the or what are the term limits for or or maybe just terms, not term limits for individuals who are on the board here in Franklin County?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure about the Board of Trustees. Um, I believe that, uh, for our regular board, I want to say it's a three year, it's a three year term. That may be different for the Board of Trustees since each county has its own own Board of Trustees. Um, but I can definitely, um, find out exactly what that is and and let you know.
And, um, that would be appreciated. Also, uh, are there, can you only serve one term on this board or is or, you know, if you can look into that and see if if multiple terms or there is some kind of limitation on the terms. And then how, uh, do does, uh, United Way of the Bluegrass accept nominations for individuals to sit on there? Might be helpful for us as members of the fiscal court who hear from constituents about their desire to serve their community, that, you know, to pass information along to you or someone else, uh, within the community if if someone so has a desire to serve in this.
Yeah, absolutely. That that's great, and we are definitely always looking for for folks who are willing to, um, to be on a board of Board of Trustees. Um, the other thing that I'll I'll find out for you, because I'm not sure the answer is how many folks can serve, because there's different numbers of people depending on on the county. Um, and typically, the the recommendations for, uh, the Board of Trustees and members, new members are are made by um, the actual Board of Trustees members themselves. So that's how we typically roll that up. Um, but for sure, I can get, uh, I'll send that information to you. We would love to make sure that we we would love to have a full board for each county, um, moving forward as we as we move forward with our with our plans.
Can you also, uh, share i- if if you have the information, if there are still subcommittees of this board that that review applications that come in for boards and, uh, you know, from the charitable organizations for funding? I know I've said on those several times. I I just don't know if now that, um, Franklin County has been combined into United Way of the Bluegrass, if that's going to to change how that that structure works.
Yeah, I'll I'll let you know. A- as it stands right now, that's that's primarily, uh, conducted by each Board of Trustee um, in the in each county, and then those decisions are rolled up to the United Way Board. Um, and then they then the the allocations, the allocations are made. Um, so for sure, those those decisions are made, um, on a county level. I'm not sure about subcommittees. I think it depends probably on on the size of of the Board of Trustees. Um, but that we do sometimes have to rely on expert reviewers, um, who aren't necessarily part of a board um, to grade and score applications, and then those recommendations are given to the Board of Trustees. And the Board of Trustees will make the final decisions based on the expert reviewers' recommendations. So it's kind of like a subcommittee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Good questions.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, Mr. Cremmons, uh, is if you give, uh, a hundred dollars to United Way, does it go straight or to a particular organization, uh, in your community? Does all of that money go to that organization?
Um, there is. So the the way it would work is you can designate to one singular organization if you like. If not, so for example, in in Franklin County, it would go into a general fund, and then all the organizations that, uh, so that request do a request for proposal. They're funded based on how much money is there and how much each organization might request for for their programming based on the dollars that are available. But it is possible to designate if there's one particular, um, organization uh, within the within the area that you would like those dollars to go to. And I'm not sure about the, uh, the admin fee. It's well below, um, the national average, and I don't have up just to caveat, I'm not part of the development team that that's sort of there. They have all that information. I'm on the programmatic side, but I want to say it was in the the ninety might have been in the ninety cent ninety cent range of each dollar that goes to the actual organizations, and then the rest of that goes to goes to admin for United Way of the Bluegrass.
All right, okay.
Don't hold me to that, but I think that's right.
Okay, Betty, have anything else?
No, I don't.
So any all staff will be getting, uh, a notice again, I guess, Betty. Is there a certain date we need to have it done by?
Um, our campaign's going to be launching now, actually. Um, that would be at least by the end of November.
Okay.
I will be sending out several reminders. As you notice, I've been sending out a whole lot of stuff here lately. Uh, but yes, I will be sending those out.
All right, Betty, thank you for your work. Mr. Cremmons, thank you for your presentation today, and all all the best to the United Way. They do so much for our community.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, well, let's move on to the next item and it's the next item and the item after that. Uh, we are glad to say that there's plenty of things going on in our community and, uh, fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, we're going to have two great things going on 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 the same night. Uh, but we're going to talk about one, it's called Bourbon on the Banks. The there's going to be two nights for this festival. It will be October the twenty second and the twenty third. Uh, the Friday night, October the twenty second. Uh, let me just say this to you. A couple of years ago, I happened to see it, and many of you did because I've never seen so many people on Broadway at one time. Well, the Friday night will start at six o'clock. It will, uh, have, uh, clowns and circus acts and uh, there you go, some pictures, uh, magicians, and most importantly, and I say this, if you haven't seen them, you sure should watch them. The KSU marching band will be there to perform at six o'clock on Broadway, and they are fantastic. So it's Friday night, six o'clock to, uh, will will be a fantastic night. There is also an a paid event at the History Center, uh, and, uh, that will be a test, uh, a tasting on Saturday night from three until midnight. Uh, actually, from three to seven on the river will be, uh, also a, uh, paid event. And after that, uh, they're going to shut Main Street down, uh, over by Goodwood in Bourbon on Main, and there's going to be a lot of bands and a lot of great, great time at, uh, in that area after seven o'clock. Uh, the next event, uh, is Family Movie Night at Lakeview Park, and that was going to be on Saturday night starting at five, and I'm going to let uh, Squire Sebastian, she's been instrumental in organizing this, let you know more about that.
Uh, thank you, Judge. Uh, you know, we are very excited as fiscal court to bring again to the community a fun, family-oriented event a- at our picturesque Lakeview Park. So we have, uh, collaborated with multiple organizations to pull this off. We will be having, uh, Kentucky Backroads Cruising. They're going to bring a variety of of vehicles out that evening between four and seven. We will utilize many of those vehicles between five and seven P M. to, uh, conduct the trunk or treat. So you'll have individuals from, uh, fiscal court and a and across county government participating with Kentucky Backroads Cruising. So you'll definitely want to bring out your, uh, trick or treat bags uh, and and partake in that. We have collaborated with, uh, Ken, the Kentucky Dance Academy as well as the uh, Capital City Dance Studio. They're going to come out and demonstrate to everybody, uh, uh, all the moves that you need to participate in the Thriller Dance Mob, and then they'll have a couple of practices for folks to come together to do that. Then, uh, around seven, we'll have them actually get everybody together and we'll try to do it all as one group. Uh, that may take, you know, we may do it two or three times if people are really enjoying that part of the activity. And then at seven thirty or thereabouts, we will show the movie Cars. So, you know, the the plus is is this is an opportunity again to to get out, uh, utilize our wonderful Lakeview Park, utilize the tiered seating there, you know, bring a lawn chair, bring a blanket. Uh, so there'll be something to do that is a free activity for all families within Franklin County between four and probably nine P M. that evening. So again, just want to thank, uh, the Sheriff's Office for helping us out. They will assist us with parking. Um, and and so many people's hands are in this, and so it will be a tremendous event.
Thinking, I I believe I'm not probably supposed to reveal this, but there is going to be a special, uh, Michael Jackson uh, lookalike, and it will be Squire Moore, who's going to dress up in his Thriller outfit and lead the Thriller Dance. Squire, I wasn't supposed to tell you that, but, uh, we're looking forward to it. All right. Thanks, Squire Sebastian. Thank you. Thank you for your good work in organizing this. That's great. Got lots of things going on next weekend, so, uh, it will be something to do for sure. All right, uh, the next, uh, item on the agenda is, uh, something good from our solid waste department. Uh, Ms. Brittany, you want to talk about hazardous waste collection?
Sure. So this hazardous waste collection event is actually this weekend, so just keeping on the calendar here. Um, we will be at the Frankfurt Recycle Center at three oh nine Rouse Avenue, which is off of Home Street. Um, this Saturday from eight to twelve. Uh, this event is open to all Franklin County residents. Um, doesn't matter if you're city or county. Uh, this is the event where we accept, you know, poisons, herbicides, pesticides, batteries, oil-based paint, aerosol cans, um, pretty much you name it. If you really think it shouldn't go in your regular trash, uh, bring it on down, and we will we'll try to help you get rid of it. Um, the only items we're really not accepting at this event are water-based paints, like latex or acrylic paints. You can harden those at home with sand, dirt, or kitty litter. Uh, we don't accept motor or hydraulic oil. You can get rid of that, um, at your local, uh, auto parts stores. Um, and then medications. You can actually dispose of medications at, um, the Frankfurt Police Station, uh, either of the C V S locations in town or at the Health Department, uh, during one of their drug takeback events. But again, we'll be there this Saturday, uh, from eight to twelve. Um, come on down. You could bring your electronics that day, too. So we'll 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 be there.
That's that is great, great announcement, uh, Brittany, and that's three oh nine Rouse Avenue off Home Street.
That is correct. Um, I just wanted to make another quick announcement. I I was a little, I was about five minutes late into the meeting, so, um, wanted to say thank you to everyone who came to our waste tire collection event. Um, we we had a lot of tires. We'll get the final numbers here in the next couple of weeks. But I wanted to mention that this weekend is the, uh, same event, but in Woodford County. So any Kentucky resident can attend any of these waste tire events. Um, this is our year, the Bluegrass Region's year to have these events. Um, they happen once every three years. So, uh, they'll the folks will be in Woodford County, um, tomorrow from eight to three and Saturday from eight to one, and they're located at the State Highway Garage at three sixty Crossfield Drive. So that's another option for anybody who may have missed our waste tire event. Um, last weekend, uh, there or two weekends ago, sorry. And, um, there's only two other tire events in our area. Um, we'll have Anderson Counties next weekend and then Mercer County the weekend after. So take care of your, uh, used tires, uh, your waste tires. Um, we'll be glad to take them off your hands. This program's helped through the state. Um, and we just want these tires disposed of properly. So thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, Brittany, will you make sure that you and Andrew coordinate on those other, uh, areas? Um, it it may be too late to put Woodford Counties in, but it won't be too late to put Anderson County and Mercer Counties in, just
Yep.
For on our website, please.
They're already up there. I got them up, um, this morning, and, um, I'll be sure to look for the other counties. Um, either their posts or I'll make one, um, myself and and get them out there.
All right, a- any questions for Brittany? All right, Brittany, thank you for that that announcement, that information. Appreciate it and so glad that uh, tire disposal went well for us a couple of weeks ago. I do see, uh, a hand Squire Muller.
Thank you, Judge. I just wanted to add something to Squire Sebastian. I want to thank her for everything she said about the movie night. But I don't want to forget, uh, our sponsors, since we're talking about movie night, because we couldn't do it without them. I'd like to thank Squire Tracy's Company for working on all the, uh, marketing materials for the event. Um, fortunately, our company has provided for the, uh, royalty cost, and we couldn't have done it without Traditional Bank being our main sponsor for this event. Um, and then the Sheriff's Department, you know, he got some things worked out with the Attorney General, so we were able to, uh, you know, use the Sheriff's Department as a nonprofit to, uh, you know, kind of run things through. So I just wanted to thank everybody, and, uh, it's going to be a great evening. Thank you, Judge.
Look it up. Thank you. All right. Wow, now we go into the other part of the agenda, which is quite lengthy, so I ask that everybody uh, get, say what they have to say. Don't hold back on that, but keep it as brief as can as we can be. First item is authorization approval minutes from our special meeting, joint meeting of September the sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Are there any questions on that? The next one is authorization approval of our minutes from our public hearing of September the twentieth, twenty twenty one. All right, the next item is authorization for approval of our minutes from our regular meeting of September the twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. All right, the next item on the agenda is authorization to accept Elkhorn Water District's audit report for the year's ended December thirty first, twenty twenty and twenty nineteen. for the year's ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty and twenty nineteen. And with it is Commissioner Brad Gregory from the Elkhorn Water District. Welcome, Mr. Gregory.
Thank you Judge. Uh, thank you Squires. I appreciate y'all having us here. Um, not sure, I'm assuming you all have all had a copy of the audit, uh the Elkhorn Water District's audit report. Um, if you haven't, I can share the screen, but that is the report from the previous two years ending um December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Um, the independent report is because of the uh, the, the uh controls that we use. Uh, there was no material findings and I'm glad to discuss any of the details that uh there are questions that folks may have in there. But overall, uh there were no material findings and uh we have increased our net position over the last two years and we're on track to do that again this year. So outside of that, if you have questions, I'm glad to entertain them. If not, I appreciate your consideration.
Squire Tracy.
No questions. Just wanted to thank you, Brad, and the other members for, for all your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Gregory, thank you. Appreciate it again. Thanks to all on your board.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next item is authorization to prove a resolution in support of the Frankfurt Plant Board's application for funding to provide internet service for the underserved and unserved residents in the unincorporated areas of Franklin County. And hallelu- hallelujah, amen, amen. I'm just thrilled that we are moving towards possibility, the probability of getting broadband to our far reaches of our county. On to talk, to lead us into discussion, um is John Cubine. And John, I'll let you introduce who's with you from the plant board. And then we'll entertain, after you've made your uh presentation, then we'll entertain questions.
Thank you Judge. Thank you, Members of Fiscal Court. Uh, Frankfurt Plant Board currently serves about eighteen thousand customers in Frankfurt, Franklin County for internet use. We had a, we have an eight-year plan to expand internet throughout the county. The opportunity and the proposal that you have in front of you and that we're gonna be discussing gives us the opportunity to in fact accelerate that to a three-year plan and reach uh all the citizens in Franklin County that much quicker. Uh, the partnership uh with the, the county and money we put up, money that you would put up would allow us as a match to leverage as much as eight million dollars in additional state funds or the possibility of federal funds. And we would use that as a match. Uh, with me is Gary Zing, who's our general manager, and Adam Heller, who's been with us for twenty-eight years and is head of telecom. And I think the most productive thing would be to turn it over to Adam and let him give you a quick overview of of what the proposal is. So Adam.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna share my screen here so we can kind of run through this uh PowerPoint presentation. Here we go. Uh, thanks for letting us speak tonight. Uh, so just give you a brief overview of what next band is. Next band is, it is a all-fiber network uh basically designed on a ten-gig scanner. Uh, we have several, oh, sorry, get a little closer here. Uh, and basically the entire network is a passive network. It's all delivered over glass, so there is no electrical interference. It's uh basically two active pieces of equipment. There's one at our head end and there's one at the house. So there is uh little magnets. It's, it's a lot nicer system than we deploy today currently in our H F C network. Uh, it's a resistance to outages and several things like that. F D B's current uh statistics here, we have currently six hundred miles of cable, three hundred miles of fiber. And that's rolling data. Basically, we have uh, we're probably exceeded five hundred miles just in our parent overbuild of next band, our parent footprint. Uh, we serve ninety-plus percent of Franklin County. Uh, and as uh Cubine mentioned, we're a little over sixteen thousand uh modem customers, eight thousand uh cable customers and uh forty-three hundred, uh forty-eight hundred voice lines. We also do business with the fiscal court, the city, the state. We have a school network that we put in over twenty years ago that's been up and running. Uh, so we're definitely a part of this community. Uh, it takes me to my next slide of why F D B. I mean, F D B is local. Uh, you know, when you call, you're probably talking to a neighbor. Uh, when somebody comes out to your house, it's probably somebody that you knew went to school with or something like that. There's several people on this uh meeting here that I know for years. Uh, apparently we have forty-seven full-time employees and that will probably change as we expand our service footprint. Um, F D B is also a municipal, so it's transparent. We have audits, we're, you know, we're public, so everybody can uh attend our meetings, they can come speak their minds, uh things of that nature. The other thing about the ARPA funds is the ARPA funds are, you know, if you read through that, it actually wants you to work with local municipalities and people that are, you know, not-for-profit that have an interest in the community. If, well, uh, just uh, we had one greenfield uh expansion area that we did, and it was Shattered Ferry. And it was kind of a test case to, we wanted to expand our footprint and, you know, provide these new services. The, what we learned is that easements were very time-consuming. If it wasn't for uh Mr. uh Tracy and Mr. Fire, uh we would probably still be working on uh trying to get easements. It took longer to achieve the easements than it actually did to build the project, design and build it. Uh, customers, when we, it was, it was really neat because when, you know, the installers went after, turned these customers on, customers just went out of the way to help. They were tickled with the service. They went above and beyond. They offered them the ditches for us. And uh, most of the feedback we get so far is, you know, customers really like the service. Uh, just some things about Shattered Ferry, you know, the construction is completely built. We do have five addresses that we can't serve yet because they're easement and we're working on a redesign. So we'll get those done, but right now we're taking orders. I think we have about twenty customers now that want the service and uh good to go. Uh, that brings up easements. It's a very long process, causes the project delays, it increases the cost of other projects. So that's why with this, we really wanna have the uh, the county to work with us in giving these easements and, you know, doing a lot of the door knocking, explaining what we're bringing. Uh, it actually helps, you know, your home base. So that's one thing we wanted to add there. The other thing we did with Shattered Ferry that we're doing now is we have streamlined the easement. We used to use like a boilerplate easement for all the utilities. We've changed that easement to really just focus on cell phone, but the other ones, you know, talk about manholes and things of that nature. So we're trying to clean that up so people better understand what we're asking for. And I have some pictures at the end here that'll kind of show you, you know, what it looks like and, you know, some areas that we've worked on in the past. So this is kind of the areas of expansion. Uh, so those are the kind of the house counts there to the side to kind of show you where we're going. And there, the numbers is no particular order. It's just uh, you know, how we basically are filling out the applications for the grants. Uh, countywide project, the timeline is, you know, uh, some of this we're starting to design now. Uh, some of the projects we picked to do this year, I think Harvey Land is one of them that we're doing. It's in the pipe to be designed. So basically twenty-two, we would start the design of the overall areas and the construction will begin at twenty-three. And trying to get all that uh equipment in and materials get it going. Uh, twenty-four, you know, we'll be completing the designs, areas that we like to bring them on when they're ready to be uh built. Because if we design them too early, if something changes, a road or something like that, a subdivision, we had to redesign. So we kind of timed the design with the uh project being constructed. Uh, so with that being said, you know, twenty-five, it's more procurement, more installation activations of the earlier phases. And then by twenty twenty-six is kind of our estimation, completing and have most of the installations complete by that point. In summary, it's twenty, or uh two thousand plus homes, rural homes, it'll be fast. There's no contracts. It's basically one gig service same as available today for our other customers. It's a countywide bill of sixteen million dollars. The plant board is uh pledging five, looking at the county to pledge three. And we're trying to get matching grant funds for the other eight million. And uh with that, you know, we don't know what we'll get this time around, but there's this uh fifty million this time. I think there's three hundred million next, and then there's lots of federal money available. And I think this is the most important time, this is the best time that we can get this project going and get it completed with the amount of federal and state programs we want on. So this picture here, it's kind of hard to see. I don't know about your screen, but the one on the left is prior to uh plant board being there. And the one on the right, uh, this highlighted there, that's actually after we came and put the line up going from the utility pole to utility pole. And this is what, it's a part of the easement process. So, you know, it's pretty much after we're in there and out, you know, we make sure we clean up after ourselves. But, you know, that's about as much as the, the average customer would see. Uh, this next one here, this is basically a, a little board that we done. And, you know, so we didn't wanna tear the fence out, so we bored underneath that. Picture's on the left is the ditch we opened up. We bored through, we covered it up, and our right is the finished product. This picture is kind of, one of them's stuck one direction, the other picture's the other. And we do this a lot too because, you know, as we work in the yard, there's other contractors, there are other utilities, especially in rural areas. So we always try to take before and after pictures so we can assure the customer we will leave that area the way we found or better. So basically this was uh the fence there is in the background on the left. We did three uh bore pits and then we bored over and set this uh basically this uh pedestal here uh down here. That was pretty fast. I ran through that. Is there any questions or anything you wanna discuss? Oh, yeah, basically the rates will be the same, you know, the basically the same rates that we offer in the city. It should be the same rates in the county, so you know, there wouldn't be no additional or higher rate just because of, you know, of this project. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that as well.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. We've got uh, uh Squire Booth has a question. We'll start with her.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to know what the pedestal was for. Is that uh? How many of those are going to be installed? I mean, what are they for? What is the purpose?
Okay, uh, so basically what the pedestal is, is that is where we go from our plant to a customer's house. And that's basically what it's for. And so if you look at the total project, less than five percent of the entire project that we're talking about is underground. So it's very few of the entire project would be underground anyway, but typically we have those every, you know, as far as as rules it is, it might be every eight houses might have something like that. Usually in the county, it's gonna be a little bit different because you're not really, this is almost in a sub, this is a subdivision, the funnel I had. So basically, the county's gonna be a lot more rules, so you wouldn't have as many pedestals as you would. We, you know, we might have a cabinet and that basically that cabinet would serve two hundred fifty customers out of that one cabinet.
Okay.
Squire Tracy?
Thanks Judge. Um, thank you guys for, for being here tonight. Um, Adam, you, you mentioned pedestal. Um, what's the distance from the right-of-way uh would fiber be ran? So let's say I live back a driveway that's two thousand feet. How far are you guys gonna run off the right-of-way?
It just really depends on the design. I mean, if it's in a right-of-way, technically you don't really have kind of easement that's in the right-of-way. What we run into is a lot of, if you look at the utility routes today, we follow those. Very few cases do we go out and establish a new utility route. So if, you know, if you're two thousand feet off the road and we're basically gonna come back those two thousand feet, then the dynamic is to that, typically we won't ask for an easement if it's just to serve you. So if it's a private drive and you want the service, then the easement's not a question. The easement comes to play when I'm crossing your farm to serve an adjacent homeowner or property owner.
Okay, so it, let's say the, the pole is X amount of feet away from my house. How far off of that pole are you, you're gonna go all the way to the house at no cost to the customer?
I'm going all the way to the house with glass, but no cost to the customer. And that's the thing we ran into the Shattered Ferry, is out there, it's all aerial utilities until the house. And so that's actually what slowed us down a little bit, is we're actually taking that instead of attaching to the house aerial, we're actually bringing everything underground, just like the electric. So everything matches and everything goes back the way it was.
Right. Um, how many underserved homes are there in Franklin County?
Underserved? It depends on the definition. I mean, it really, we don't know everything because we don't know. There's some fixed wireless and some wire, you know, uh A T and T and some other fixed wireless providers. So I'm, I'm gonna say two thousand. I don't know for sure. Uh, we just kind of go off the maps that they, they provided us, the, the state grant. And some of those maps, they were kind of wrong because they actually show no service in our service areas they do. So we really don't know. We're estimating two thousand.
And that's on underserved. So to circle back, how many unserved homes are in Franklin County?
I would say real close to that, maybe twenty-one hundred, maybe a little less, but they're, they're almost the same number. It really de- depends on what you consider underserved. You know, there was a three and twenty-five, now they're talking about a ten and a hundred. So it really depends on what the definition is. But I, I think you're safe to say that your two thousand homes are underserved.
So underserved would be two thousand and unserved would be two thousand. So you're looking at four thousand total?
No, I mean, those are kind of, it's the same number really. I mean, it's hard for us to tell who has fixed wireless since there is no wireless or who has six, uh fixed wireless through A T and T. So let's just say that there might be some that are, let's say it's eighteen hundred that are underserved or unserved and two hundred that are underserved. It's really hard for the plant board to tell because a lot of the information is inaccurate. And so basically with the grants, when you fi- apply for the grants, you put areas in there that you feel that are unserved or underserved. And so then there's a, a period during the grant process where if somebody serves out of here, they come back and say, we serve this area, so it should be moved from the granters. And that's what we're basically, we've done. We look at areas, you know, we can, there was, I think, one or two areas that we pulled down. Spectrums in the far uh corner of Franklin County. We took those off the grants because there's really no reason to file for funds because it's already uh spoken.
Right, okay. And, and you referenced the state test and I, I would assume that's the speed test?
Yeah, the, the state, when they put out the R F P, uh they, you know, they've had this, we go and do a, a speed test and that kind of tells you your performance. And they kind of tied that into their grant application. So they actually published a map. They kind of laid out areas that were unserved or underserved.
What, what were the uh, what were the speeds in the underserved areas?
I believe they're, I believe they're three and twenty-five. I don't have it in front of me, but I think a lot of it was three and twenty-five. Like I said, it depend some of it, you know, they went by ten and a hundred, some is three and twenty-five. And you got, there's a federal uh Broadband Act two that has a little bit different standard, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alan, uh or John or Gary, uh, how will you all look at this as a priority? Uh, if all of this goes through, uh, we get the monies and uh I know that Squire Moore's district in Ballinob uh will say, Squire Moore, we wanna be first. And I know that Squire Tracy's district in Peaks Mills will say, I wanna be first. And then Squire Booth and then Squire Sebastian and I, everybody uh out there, we've all heard from constituents. When is this gonna happen? When is this gonna happen? And we wanna be first, so. How, so we might as well just put it out on the table, i- if these monies, you know, and when, well, when these monies become available, how are you gonna look at uh serving the areas first?
I think maybe, uh, Adam and Gary can uh chime in, but I think the first thing that happens is tonight, what we're, you know, asking uh Judge you and the fiscal court is a resolution that we can submit the application, which we have to do by what, October twenty-fifth, to ask for these funds. So we're, we need to submit the application, be able to demonstrate that we're partnering with you. Then the application will actually be eleven different applications. And we're splitting the county up because there's limits to how much you can get per application. So that way we have the best opportunity to get the full eight million dollars of leveraged federal funds to bring in. So we'll be able to represent that we're partnering with you. Then as that's approved, we will sit down and come back to fiscal court with a memorandum of agreement to actually work out the details, the timelines, the deployment, the studies and work with you and partner with you all in terms of where we go and how fast, where we've got the materials, where we can go the fastest. All those things, we'll work through that. So we're not in any way asking fiscal court for a blank check. We basically withdraw the funds from you all as we actually uh implemented that. So we wouldn't be asking for all your money. We would, we talked low with your grant person. Uh, we would basically, you'd have control of your funds and we would bill you as we deploy. And then we would do an M O A and actually work out the details of the agreement with fiscal court based on our planning and design. based on our planning and design and how fast we can get to each area. Adam, you want to?
Yeah, I mean, it really is not trying to pick districts, but it's more of, where do you, where's your best spend at? Where, where can you get the most people online? Because at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to provide broadband for these people. So I would look at it, whatever place would cast the biggest net, where your best money is spent. What people can get online, not really where they're at, but where you, you know, as we look at the design and the cost, it's like, okay, we can get two hundred people online for, you know, half a million dollars or one point five million dollars, whatever it is. That's where, I mean, as far as thinking of it, that's where I would spend the money.
Judge, uh, this is Gary. I really appreciate his opportunity. Thank you. Thank you, the court. I think the priority you asked, you know, in my opinion, myself, is really going to set by the state. Because there is eleven independent projects applied. Whichever project they founded now become the highest priority because we have to follow state's requirement. You know, deploy the timely by that. I think only we have a question is when we have all apply, all award eleven projects. Then, you know, Adam, actually, we have a contract engineer, contractor already to do. There are certain limitations could come in, like a material because of pandemic, anything else. But we will come to report you. But in my, our view, if we got the money, whichever go first, we build it. I assume we can. That's kind of in our view. But I think in the most part is priority not going to set by us, is going to be set by state when they award the project.
Good, good, good point. Squire Moore?
Yeah, the, uh, the map you put up that had the numbered pink areas, is that your individual uh, applications and do those numbers have any priority to them or are they just numbers?
They're just numbers. It was just, uh, just a number of the phases. So when we turned in the application, we could basically say which ones were, uh, you know, what areas they were because we're all, so you know, we'll, uh, put the design and the application in the map altogether, so.
You had something up earlier, uh, Adam, about what, ten gigabytes, man? Uh, tell us what, 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 uh, is it going to be a hundred? Uh, I believe the state requires a hundred up and a hundred down, and if you would explain that and, and even on simpler terms, I believe you mentioned something about what you, how much you could stream and how, uh, on the four K and all of that type of stuff. So let's put it in, in, uh, in layman's terms on what you're going to be providing and, uh, what will it allow them to do?
Okay, so basically, uh, you know, we have based, on the next band product, we have a one gig offering. So it's one gig down, which is a thousand and then five hundred up. So, I mean, basically you could stream seventeen hundred Netflix shows at one time. Uh, you could upload, oh, well, uh, thousands of photos in seconds. Uh, the only limitation to this, uh, design is the equipment on each end. And so as technology improves, we replace the equipment on each end. And then you have the newest technology available. I mean, right now they have, uh, there's, you, there's a speed on fiber where you could actually take the entire Netflix library and download it in less than a second. So the infrastructure we're putting in is only limited by devices on each end.
So that's, I'm sorry. The question that those people that live in the unserved, especially the unserved and more than likely the underserved is what kind of product are they going, uh, uh, they, what options will they have, uh, to buy from you all?
They will, right off, every customer that we turn on will have access to a full gig of download. So they'll have access to the fastest speed the plant will provide state.
What, what we've been doing, Judge, is throughout the city and the county right now, we're in the process of replacing our copper or coax cable with fiber. But on what we're talking about here, the proposal we're bringing to the county now is everything we're going to be implementing, everything we're proposing will only be fiber. We're not putting in any a coax anywhere. They will get the latest, most modern product that we're installing anywhere. That will be what they get is that, that product, they won't be getting any copper. They'll be getting, uh, the full fiber right off the bat.
In front of, from what I understand, the fiber, uh, is capable of all kinds of, of more and more and more. So as, as technology improves with more gigabytes and whatever, fiber is, fiber can handle that. Is that correct?
Yes, and that is, you know, if you look at the cost of this project of being sixteen million dollars, the bulk of that is fiber. So the bulk of it is the infrastructure. And so you're, you know, when you need to make that next technology move, very small incremental cost to replace the electronics on both ends. And the reason we're doing fiber is the same reason a lot of these areas don't have coverage today. There's too much loss with the copper plant and that's why these areas haven't, don't have service today. With fiber, the loss is not there. It's almost non-existent. And so we can go a lot farther, a lot faster and cover these areas with this newer technology.
Squire Sebastian?
Uh, thank you Judge and gentlemen, thank you for being on this evening. Um, I wanted to ensure something that I heard earlier and I wanted to make sure I, I, I heard it uh, this way, or you can correct the way that I thought I heard it. So this expansion, if, if approved by court, will include every household in Franklin County. Whether that, whether that household right now could be served by the plant board or another carrier, right? Because if they drop the other carrier, then they will, won't be served or will be underserved.
Right. The grant money is only for areas that are unserved. We have very little areas that have, uh, competition in the rural areas. So, I mean, I think there's, you know, one little spot of spectrum. So those areas will probably build anyway, but we would not call for grant money because that, you know, grant is for unserved or underserved people. So, yeah, when we build those areas, those will, they will have access, they will have a choice.
One of the things, uh, uh, that you hear a lot is we, the plant board, we don't just go where there's a high take rate, where there's a large number of people who will take our service. We will go wherever everybody is and they'll have the opportunity to take it. But we won't go just to areas that have a high take rate like in subdivisions. I mean, our goal is to provide the service to everyone.
Uh, thank you. And I, I have a question for the members of the committee. Um, can you tell me what separated this bidder, uh, from the others? Because I'm presuming, because this is a multimillion dollar project, that we got bids on it?
No, we didn't have, we don't have to bid it because they're a governmental agency. Uh, we, uh, we had got no bids. AT&amp;T did not, uh, it said they weren't going to do it. And Comcast has never come back to us. We've asked, we've talked with them and they haven't come back to us. So the plant board came to us, said that, uh, um, they would like to, uh, uh, be our partner. And that's where, that's where we stand.
So, so we're not sure what the market bears. We're not sure about the competition for the market, right then? If we don't have other bidders for the service?
Well, if, uh, if you base, if, if you want to base, uh, the bid that Comcast did with Scott County, it's virtually the same, all, virtually all of Scott County is Comcast. And, um, it's almost exactly the same. It's eighteen million to provide, uh, uh, for all of it in, in Scott County and Scott County's putting up three million. And, uh, Comcast is putting up, uh, a little bit more, uh, more than that, but are going after the rest of it. They're going after fifteen million in loans.
So, uh, uh, another question because many of us have gone to a variety of trainings. And all of the trainings at this point and the information that's been provided to us at, at these conferences and things that we get to our inbox from NACO every day have told us that, uh, there will be a direct appropriation for broadband and that that is forthcoming. And then certainly if you look in the infrastructure bills, there's the broadband provision, infrastructure bill, the broadband equity and access and deployment program, that's twenty-two billion dollars that's set out there. Uh, there's enabling the middle man, uh, middle mile broadband infrastructure of one billion and the Digital Equity Act, which is one point three billion. And so all the trainings we've been to so far have told us or advised us to preserve the county's portion of money for one-time, unique programs that could, you know, be a catalyst in the community rather than, than spending that at this point on broadband because it is coming. Now, I, I'm, I would welcome any other member of fiscal court to tell me that they may be hearing something different because that's what I have heard and what I keep getting to my inbox.
Let me, let me get Shane New on from Bluegrass Ed because he's, he's represents several counties. Shane, before you go, are you on? Shane?
Yes, sir. I apologize for not turning on my video.
Yeah, I didn't know you were on. Uh, did you hear Squire Sebastian's, uh, uh, question?
Yes, I did. And I, and I do suspect, uh, that there will be lots of funding coming down, but, but I will say this. It will all be highly competitive. You know, and so that's the, that's the other side of what, what you see on this versus an opportunity that is actually in front of us now. And of course, you know, it sounds like that, that with this, we are going after, you are going after some state, the state funding. And, uh, I think the plant board also said if, you know, there's possibilities of going after other funding that is out there. So I think it sounds like to me from this, this particular process that that funding is actually on the table. Uh, you know, for, for possibilities if they don't get what they're looking for at the state. So I know there's the NTIT, is it NTIT? Uh, I can't, I can't remember. There's so many acronyms out there. But there is several, several pots of funding. USDA, of course, puts out funding. And, you know, the ad districts, of course, will be more than happy to help, uh, with some of that if, if you all go through the process with the state and don't get funding there. Plus I do think it's two hundred and fifty million that's available next year in the same route and, and through the same funding. So, uh, the opportunities are there. Uh, but, uh, it definitely, any, any project like that, the ARPA funding, anything that you have skin in the game looks, uh, better on these projects when you put it forth yourself to.
Now Shane, and, and thank you for that. Uh, you don't have to, but it did, don't, it did recommended that an ISP provider be the conduit to go after these monies?
In, in this first round, that is what we have heard, that is better for the, for the ISP was actually what we'd heard. We did hear a little bit of different news on that today, uh, Judge, but I haven't confirmed it, so I don't really want to get into too much detail on the possibilities of, of the county actually going after that funding themselves. Uh, but that was kind of brought up to us today that that might be a possibility in one other area that we were looking at. But, um, you know, that, that the ISP was the way I read this the first time. It was for the ISP would be the one providing it for this state money.
Okay, Shane, Shane is with Bluegrass Ed. Squire Sebastian?
Thank you Judge. I just again wanted to go back to the members of the court to see if they had heard maybe something different than, than I have heard in regard to, uh, preserving the county's portion or as much of the county's portion as it possibly could to go after infrastructure funding like this broadband when it becomes available, which should be soon. I just wanted to make sure that maybe I, maybe I've misheard it at, at trainings and conferences and perhaps I'm misreading the emails I seem to get from NACO every day. But I just wanted to check just to be sure. Thank you.
Let's, uh, ask, uh, Ann Northcutt. Ann, do you have something to say about that?
Um, yes, I do believe that any of the federal funds, any of the federal programs are going to require a local participation. And, you know, there's always a, a chance of something unexpected that none of us have heard about yet uh, might become available, but that sounds to me like what the, what the plant board is saying, you know, we will have other options for, uh, for looking for funding. The, uh, the ARPA funds, the broadband infrastructure is one of the eligible categories that we can use these ARPA funds for, as, as you've all heard, I'm sure, in, in all of your trainings as well. Um, what, after, after a lot of thought and a lot of research, uh, the one, the one word that, uh, the plant board used in their presentation, which really stood out to me was local. Is that these are, and I know you're not asking about the, the choice of the plant board, but, uh, these are local jobs. This is a local focus. This is, uh, the money for these contracts will in a large part stay in our local economy. Uh, that's why, you know, I, I felt like this is a really positive move, move for us. And also making the move at this time will place us ahead in the queue of a lot of places that will be looking to wait until, you know, maybe there might be enough money for them to approach this, this, uh, this category of expense. Uh, I believe that a lot of that federal money is going to go to very rural areas that don't have the capacity or don't have any infrastructure built for middle mile and some of those, uh, those kinds of, of activities. So, um, I don't know if I've answered your question or not, but I, I do feel like any federal funds that flow down are going to require local participation. So this is, uh, this is the same thing we're talking about here.
Squire Tracy?
Thank you Judge. Uh, Squire Sebastian, you are right. That's, that's what we're hearing. But, um, Adam, quick, quick question. You mentioned Spectrum. Um, as someone who represents an area that, that backs up to Scott County, um, and has kept up with the, the project that they have going on. Scott County's committing three million dollars as well and Spectrum's committing eighteen million. One of the big differences that I'm seeing is I think it's going to be two years for the county project. They're going to take two years to upgrade the whole city, uh, with fiber. They're expecting five thousand plus underserved and unserved in the county to be, to have an opportunity for, for this. Um, is, is, is that what you've heard or have you, have you seen that? Uh, and I guess my, my question is, do you see, uh, you, you mentioned Spectrum on the backside over there and maybe not draw, not drawing in that backsided area of Union Ridge and, and probably all the way up to maybe Gregory Woods in that area. Um, do you see that, that not being drawn in just because Spectrum is right there on the county line?
I mean, they, they could definitely approach it. I mean, they, they are Scott County. I mean, that is their, their presence over there. So basically what, what you would get in that respect is you're going, they're just picking up what's left over on their network. If you're on the edge, the same reason we built out years ago, we put fiber to all the schools. And if you look around all the schools, we provide service. That was just areas on the edge of the network. That's kind of like extra capacity left over. And I think that's what, you know, that's what they would be offering you guys. You're just right there on the edge. They don't have facilities there because they're required to do that for Scott County, so.
Thank you.
I believe, uh, Squire Moore and Spectrum on the, on some of the, on the Shelby County line too. Shelby Franklin County line.
Uh, I don't know about Spectrum, but, uh, there's, uh, Verizon ran, uh, fiber through down, down was hauling down, uh, Skyview. Would you all, you probably wouldn't rent a line from them, would you? You'd build your own, wouldn't you?
Yes, that fiber you actually installed is for cell, uh, tower backhaul. And it's, it's going across the United States.
Yeah, but, yeah, but they put an extra line in for, to lease out to someone.
Yeah, that, that type of fiber, it's, it's more point to point. And when you get into fiber to the home architecture where we're dropping the fiber to every residence, it really does it. There's not the capacity there that we need.
Okay, thank you.
Squire Booth?
Yes. Uh, I understand that municipal utilities are not regulated by the Public Service Commission. Is there another government agency that has any authority over what you propose? What FPB proposed, I should say.
Your board?
No, I mean, no, I, we might add, uh, for example, a, a regular, if I'm not, say correct me, uh, regular internet providers are not regulated by the Public Service Commission either. So we're municipal and we're not under the PSC per se, but regular internet providers like AT&amp;T and that for phone service and so forth. But if you're just an internet provider, you're not regulated by the Public Service Commission. But the difference is, and Adam was saying, you know, we are regulated in a sense that we have a board that's appointed. Uh, and we are a public agency and we're right here. So you see what we're doing? So you see what we're doing. And if there's a problem, all you have to do is pick up the phone and call someone. I mean, because we're we're here in town, as Adam said, every board member, every employee, there, you're going to see them at Walmart or Kroger's or something else. I mean, if there's a problem, we're accessible. And believe me, we we get a lot of calls about everything. So, I mean, we get feedback from customers and all of our complaints, everything is public record. We go over them and review them, and you can see how we've handled every complaint.
That's the board has handles every complaint?
The board is aware of complaints. Every month, we get a report on on customer calls, comments, problems, what's going on. So the board's aware, and we'll see if we're having a lot of customer calls, a lot of outages, a lot of problems. We review that at every board meeting.
Good.
And that information, for example, if fiscal court ever wanted to see that information, we're certainly available to come down and brief you on what's going on and what we're hearing, not just on cable, but on water, electric, telephone. I mean, we're subject to open records, open meetings, the same as you all are.
Yeah, we, every, every month, we provide the board with a trouble call report, an outage report. So we basically tell them every trouble call that we work, every outage that we had, it's all in our board report.
Good.
Squire Muller?
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, gentlemen, for for being here and giving that presentation. Just to kind of go back on Squire Sebastian's question, you know, I too have heard, you know, don't spend the money for years suspended. And there's definitely more money coming for broadband and things like that. I I guess where I am, and no disrespect to anybody, but, you know, we were put on this board to be fiscally responsible. And I don't, just having one piece of paper in front of us to say this is the amount, I mean, and it looks like after reading the the background here, you know, there there's maybe phone calls made to some other providers. I would feel much more comfortable if an RFP or something like that went out. So we at least, you know, this might be a great deal. I mean, I have no idea. This is not my world. So I just wanted to share that with with the court.
The, John, in, and Ann, you might be on this, too. In 20, the 25th of October, the last date for ISP providers, anyone that wants to be an ISP provider for a community to get their application in. And so you're the only one that has stepped forward to to be the ISP provider. So you can't really do an RFP if you're not an ISP provider for our community. Is that correct, Ann or John?
Ann, do you want to?
That's my understanding is that's the deadline for applying to the state for their, for the for the funds that have been obligated for broadband.
And I guess what I might just add in response is, while we're excited about this is, you know, we have plans to expand into Franklin County. We see this as an opportunity that if fiscal court wants to go this direction and do the resolution, that we're not, we're, we have the advantage of being just like a state price contractor, GSA contract. We, we're a government agency. We basically see where fiscal court wants to invest 3 million in this. It gives you all the opportunity to leverage $15 million or $13 million. Five from us, eight million in federal. So the county can invest three, we're putting in five, and we can leverage another eight million and basically achieve what we think is an excellent service in a three-year timeframe, which for economic development, as Adam mentioned, home values. We're in the community, we've got a track record. The reason we're a government entity and the reason there are things in the statutes and regulations allowing public agencies to do business is we feel we have the advantages pricing-wise, we're competitive or cheaper than most than our competitors. We have no long-term contracts. So if you sign up with us, you don't like our service, you're with us four or five months, you want to drop it, you can drop it. There's no buyouts of contracts. There's no lower rate for one year than a bump up the second year. The rate you get would be a rate that we establish at public hearings with public comment. So there's no extra hidden charges. I I think we feel like it's a, it's a great proposal. And obviously, we're interested in it because the more customers we get, the lower our per-unit service is. And if you look at our costs right now, our cost of serving people, for example, on cable has not gone up in years. We work cost was about $12, something a month at them for cable. All the cost increases we have in cable are because we're programming, we're buying from Disney, ESPN, or whatever. The more units of service we serve households, the cheaper that cost gets. So our costs actually have held steady for years on cable providers. And we we all recognize internet is the way it's going. People want the internet for all kinds of reasons, bring other services in, and we feel it's a state-of-the-art network at a very competitive price.
John, this is a, this is a resolution saying that we support you in your, in your pursuant to being an ISP provider for Franklin County. And it is, it's really non-binding unless you can get the money. And then you got to come back to us and we have to work out an agreement with you to to do it. Is that correct? And I could see, maybe Rick Sparks could elaborate, too.
That that's correct, Judge. This is a resolution in support. It doesn't obligate anything at this point. The final resolution, resolution would be in the form of an agreement, once it's approved or not. And the details would have to be worked out at that point. I talked to counsel for the plant board earlier this week about that. And that's a another step down the road, but that's correct.
Thank you. Andrew, did you, are you, do you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. I I would, if you may, if I may.
Yes, sir.
You know, I was in several meetings with the judge, with plant board and the other major telecom providers in the area, along with Ann and Robert and the staff here. I will tell you that one of the probably the biggest telecom provider in a meeting that we had with them made it very clear that they would not cover the entire county, that they were not interested, that it was a money issue for them. They crunched the numbers. And if it didn't make, that it had to meet a certain percentage of take, you know, take rate. And they said, we just know that it is going to make financial sense for us. And they're like, we can't do the whole county. And I know that that is a big part of this project is that we have to do the entire county. And, you know, they were just straight up, that that they weren't interested in that.
Thank you, Andrew. Squire Tracy?
Thank you, Judge. Andrew, thank you. I appreciate that. But ultimately, I mean, I'm looking at it. I've been told tonight that there's parts of the county that's not going to be served either. It's, you know, the areas that butt up against Scott County. My concern is that, you know, we spent $16 million on this project a as a, as a group, as a whole. And we still have homes that don't have the the capability of being served. And that's who you're going to hear from.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. Adam, you got some? I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I must have misspoke. No, this plan would pick up every address in Franklin County. It would be, we would butt up to Scott County, we would butt up to Anderson County, actually already butt up to Woodford County, Shelby County, we would cover every address.
That was my understanding.
Sorry.
Okay.
But nothing would change, for example, that if the people who right now have Spectrum there from Scott County, if they want to keep Spectrum, they certainly could. There's nothing that would require them to take our service. They could keep what they have. But we would be there and offer them our service if they wanted. But if they said, no, we're happy with what we got, then there's no obligation, there's no obligation for anyone to take this service. It's, if they want to take it, you know, we're estimating a take rate to fill out our financial models. But it's on a home-by-home basis. They say, I don't want it. I want to stay with my provider. Fine, if they pass us and a year from now they come back and say, no, now I want it, then we'd be back there to put it in.
Conversely, John, in Union Ridge, in that far corner, north eastern corner of Franklin County that abuts Scott County there, can they, if if they want Comcast, can they get Comcast?
I do not know what Comcast's area is in that corner. I don't think they serve it today. I think that's actually a part of their expansion they're doing in Scott County.
I'm sorry. Yeah, as they expand out, could they get Comcast if they wanted?
Yeah. I don't know if they're coming in Franklin County. I just know that part of the agreement or that they were going to get, you know, that area of Scott County. So they might butt right up to the county line. They might step over. Those houses are pretty sparse up there, so.
Okay. Squire Sebastian?
Thank you, Judge. And I I I just go back to the the guidance that that we've gotten from the federal government, from NACO, from CAECO, from other institutions. So my question is, is could, because we've been instructed to preserve as much as we possibly could. So rather than, I've heard we're not agreeing on an amount anyway tonight. There's one proposed by the committee. I'm not sure who floated that. But but perhaps we, rather than give a full third of what the county's allocation is through ARPA, maybe we say we're going to set aside a million. And as we wait for other paperwork to matriculate through the process, the other pots of money that that I think I mentioned and others where we talked about broadband equity access and deployment program, which has 42 billion in it, the enabling middle-mile broadband infrastructure, which has 1 billion in it, and the Digital Equity Act of 2021 that has 1.3 billion in it at this point, which is winding its way through the federal process.
There is absolutely no reason we can't do that. All we're saying, all we've told them is, is that we've said we have 1 million set aside in this year's ARPA. And we use that towards it. The next year that we could, we don't have to, we can go, Ann is probably the world's best at getting us money. We could go and get two more million from ARPA, or we could get it from anything else, any other grant. So we, we don't have to use ARPA next year, but it's just, it it will be there. And we've already appropriated, the committee has said that there's, there's a million this year, 2 million next year, if we want to use it. If not, and there's other ways to get it, by all means, let's not, let's not just say that we don't, won't apply for anything and and not do this because we.
No, that, that's my point. My point, I guess, to 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 the court is, is at every turn since this came out, since ARPA funding was made available and the discussions began back in March, we have been told that broadband would be a plank of the initial amount that was giving to, given to and made available to local governments. I'm sure we got our portion, the city got their portion. However, we've also been made available and aware at every turn that additional pots singularly for broadband are available. Not that we would not set aside some portion of our county toward this, because I think we want this to begin as soon as possible, at least in my area. I know there are a lot of people that live out in the county that would would love to avail themselves of of better internet access. Me personally, I live in a river bottom. It's horrible here. However, that said, you know, if we say that we're pledging a full third of the county allocation toward this and and forego other opportunities for broadband, then that limits our ability to spend the remaining portion of what the county allocation is. And I think what we're trying to all, or or at least the the comments I'm hearing is we're all trying to be fiscally responsible and maximize the value of this one-time money for many projects that that could be creative and innovative across our community. And certainly, as well, as well as something that is in dire need. So all I was saying is that maybe we pledge tonight a million rather than pledging a full third toward this. So I I just raised that. I would love to hear any other comments in that regard.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you.
They are going to have to take a resolution to the state by the 25th with a with a pledged amount. So you can't, they, we're not going to get the whole county in unless we pledge what we're saying, $3 million. It doesn't matter. Listen, if if the three, if the 2 million from ARPA next year bothers you, then all we need to say, let's don't say ARPA, don't put ARPA as a tag for it. Let's say the county will commit this year in 2021, 1 million towards providing broadband in Franklin County. In 2022, the county will provide 2 million dollars towards broadband with for a total of 3 million dollars. So it doesn't matter. I mean, what what, it's kind of semantic. So if 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 we can get and find 3 million dollars from somewhere else, let's do it, by all means. So let's just do it that way. Let's just make a resolution. Let's just say, change the verbiage, instead of saying ARPA, that we will provide 1 million dollars in 2021 and 2 million in 2022. Ann, do you, do you concur with that, Ann Northcutt?
Yes, I don't have a problem with that.
So just to follow up, I know, I know this request is made of us because there are probably a variety of unserved and underserved areas across the county. Is, are there underserved and unserved areas in the city? And the city going to be approached maybe to also, you know, be a partner and a player in this? I I hadn't asked that, and I, and I haven't heard any member of the committee speak to any of that. So it would just be helpful to know that. Thank you.
Yes, currently, as far as I know, there is no areas in the city that are under or not served.
Okay. Squire Tracy, you had something?
I do. Thank you, Judge. Judge, just circle back to a comment earlier, just for clarification purpose. You all had a, you, your staff had a conversation with AT&amp;T, and they are not interested.
That is correct. Okay, any other questions? Squire Blackwood, good to hear from you, Squire Blackwood. You've been kind of quiet in that corner over there.
I'm taking a lot in. Yeah, I've got fiber at my house and and it's wonderful. But I've got a lot of students that don't have internet, and it's a big deal. It puts a burden on a lot of folks, puts a burden on the teachers creating entire assignments without internet when you have web-based programs and things like that. It's, 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 it's not equitable in teaching. But anyway, you know, I was, I was, I've been listening to this, and I know that, you know, I agree, we've all been told not to spend monies. And and I like the thought of of changing the wording of this of this proposal to be where we use whatever funds we can get, because I know that there's more coming. But we're, you know, you said you had meetings with AT&amp;T and those folks. Did, was the committee in on those meetings? Was Marty and Lambert there at those meetings, or was it just staff?
No, that wasn't an ARPA committee. That was just broadband information.
Okay.
There was no committee on on that.
Okay, thank you.
Squire Muller?
Hey, hey, Judge. I guess this is a question for the the plant board. Do you all have to have a dollar amount on this? Or is, would it be sufficient to have an agreement that we are going to partner with you? I think you all understand, we're trying to be fiscally responsible with the one-time money we're getting. And to be blunt, we don't want to screw it up, you know? So I guess help us here. Tell, tell us exactly what you all would need to be happy.
Well, it's, what we're proposing is, it's a 50-50 match. So we're putting in, we're advancing five. If we get three from you, that allows us to match and and hopefully get another eight. If we only have a million from you, then that gives us six, then we can apply for another six. So your 3 million leverages another 3 million in grant funds. So we're estimating the total cost of the project at 18, I mean, at 16. And so we need, your three allows us to get the full amount of matching state funds if we receive them through those 11 projects. So that's kind of what the magic of the 3 million dollars is. It's a match, a 50-50 match. Five's all, we don't want to raise, we're, we're going to build it as you go. The way our business is organized is electric funds, electric, water funds, water. So we basically feel that if we start installing, we get additional subscribers, we can put up 5 million. And we can float, like, if we have 1 million from you now, we understood the other 2 million wouldn't be till next year. We can cover that cash flow, but we can't cover it on a long-term basis. And we want to get the maximum grant that we possibly can. So that's the magic in the three, is we want to be is we want to be able to use your three as part of our application to get another three million in state funds. That's kind of what the magic of the number is.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Squire Moore?
Yeah, I, I've had conversations with AT&amp;T because there's a handful of people in my area that have high-speed DSL. And if you get off of that, say if someone moves out, turns it off, and somebody else moves into that house, they can't get it. So once you're off, you're off. There's just a very few people that have it. And it's questionable at best anyway, so. And they have no intention of expanding that.
Squire Sebastian?
Thank you Judge. Just a quick question for Squire Moore. Out on Flat Creek, who's a provider out there? Is that in your?
Yes, that's Frankfurt Plant Board. They, they, they put, they put fiber out to the old ball knob school before it closed. And, and they picked up every one they could at that time and around there.
So it's all, so Flat Creek already has availability, which is good if it does?
Yes, some of it does.
Yeah, not all.
Some of it, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it goes back to the earlier presentation where we're, we primarily built HFC with COAT. We have limited range. So if you look at the, the map, we see it, it's in the green area there. You see how it kind of spider webs out? We basically run out of signal and cannot expand any further with current technology.
All right, great discussion. John and, and, and all of you, this is a work session and we'll go through several more items and I don't know how much longer to tell you. But we're not even halfway through yet, but we will, it will come to a vote later on this evening.
Okay, do you need us to stay around or?
No, you don't need to stay around. No, that, that's fine. That's fine. Wait a minute, there's a question here from Squire Tracy. Let's see if he's got a question that you all might need to answer.
My question's for you Judge. In regards to the commitment, does it have to be a two-year commitment, or could it be a three-year, one million dollar commitment each year? Or does it have to be a two-year?
Well, they, well, if, I don't know. We looked at it from the standpoint of what you needed. Really, it's more important that you get a commitment that we're going to give three million dollars towards a project so you can apply for the monies through the state as opposed to, it really, it, it will only be drawn down as it is used, Squire Tracy. So it may not be, i- i- if we, you may not, it may be a three-year period, but if, if, but if they were to expedite and say, we can get, we can get it done in two years, I'd hate to say, well, we can't pay you for another third year, in the, till the third year. So it, it works to, to all, everybody, both of our sides advantage that they don't get it until it's used, basically.
Right. So I guess the, for the, the plant board group, would it matter to you guys if it was over a three-year span to follow the project that's been proposed?
Well, now, there's one other caveat to that, Squire Tracy, that I think we need to be aware of. You're not going to be able to apply for one million if, if all of these monies are out there and that's what Squire Sebastian is saying. And we all know, and we all said, there's all going to be all these monies out there. You can't apply for, we want one million one year. We want me, another million the next year. So you have to apply for it all at one time and then, then you would have to use it.
I, I understand that, but again, we're, as Dave said, we're talking commitment. So my question is, is back to, as long as we commit, can we do it one million a year for three years? It's, it's about commitment is the way that I took it.
Well, it's also about the process of getting it done too. So that means that you, we wouldn't pay them if, after a year, is what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying. Mr. Cuban?
Yes, sir.
Would, would it make a difference? Obviously, this is not going to be a two-year project. We're all aware of that. Again, you all were a part of Shadrack Ferry and so was I. And we know that it's not going to be a two-year project. So would a three-year commitment at a million dollars per year, would that affect the grant that you all are going to apply for?
We're going to, we're going to represent in our application that we're, we're putting up five, you're all putting up three, and we're asking for eight. From a cash flow standpoint, we had already assumed that we, from you paying us, we're not asking for a million upfront or three million upfront. You'll pay us, you're never going to see a situation where we take your money and then come back a year from now and say, whoops, we didn't get it done. We only want, we'd like to get paid if we get the work done. But from a cash flow standpoint, we ought to be able to work. Adam's nodding his head, so, and it has not kicked me under the table. So from a cash flow standpoint, I think we can match your cash flow situation to fund our project as long as we know that if we, if we, if we're going to bring a due bill someday, you're going to pay us someday.
Yeah, so as long as, as long as the commitment is there.
Yes, sir.
Right, and that's what I'm hearing too, John. I'm hearing the same thing you are. As long as the commitment's there, it, it's when the invoices are turned in as you all do the work. So just, just how the money's moved. So this is sort of just an old budgeting thing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
Squire Muller?
Thank you Judge. So I guess I have a, a question for Tamara. So Tamara, I guess you're going to rewrite that to, to take ARPA funds out and just say, over, you know, a million a year for three years commitment, is that correct?
That's what I've been raising my hand about. So I've already brought, logged into my desktop here so that I can amend it and word it any way that you all would like. And so it's just the resolution that I'll be changing. And to just guide me on how you want it structured, what you want it to say, and, and I can make those changes really easy. I could do a screen share so that you all can see it, whatever you would like.
Rick, I'm sure you've got some thoughts about it. But let me say this. The resolu- the resolution need, only needs to say that the county will commit three million. There, there's another piece to this that we haven't, we've got to remember, and that will be an inter-local agreement with them. And that inter-local agreement could say that it would be one million per year. But they really need this commitment saying to the state that the county will commit three million dollars.
We're, we're all aware of that. We're, that's what we're trying to get to. We're, we're aware of that. I was, that's why I was asking if you could do a three-year, one million. And it, it's all about the commitment. And according to the plant board, they, they are very willing and to do it and, and think they can. So I, I think it's just about the commitment, the three years. We, all we have to do is commit to them that we're going to do it. And I've just been listening to something different.
Well, I don't, Rick, does the resolution need to say to the state that, that, okay, that, that's my point. That's my argument, is that the resolution doesn't need to say that you're going to pay one million per year. It, it needs to say that the county is going to commit to three million.
Correct, correct. Right, I, I, I think.
But nobody's saying anything different in that regard.
Correct. The, the resolution, the only third thing that I heard was discussed or whatever, it's, it's right there to look at, just has an amount and that the court's good with this. It's a good idea. For those of us who live out in the hinterlands, let me assure you, it's a damn good idea. Okay? And I'm serious about it. And thank you all, and, and thank you for those working out. And, and thank you for Squire Tracy and Chris Choir getting the thing out at least on their starting road out there where, where people have. It's awful hard to get AT&amp;T when the sun goes down and, and other cell service, and it gets frustrating. But my point is, the resolution just simply says that the county's good for this up to a certain amount. There's no timeframe, there's no details. I, I tried to state that at the beginning. That's to be worked out at a later date. It does specify a funding source, and I'll defer to the court about what you think about that. But it's really just a, this is the amount, this is what we're looking at doing in a broader sense. And it's going to require a MOU or agreement, if and when it's approved, to have those details. Don't get dragged down in the details. This is just a, a letter of support.
Squire Muller?
Thank you Judge. Thank you, Rick. Yeah, I just want to kind of keep moving here. Tamara, I'm going to say on the financial impact, we just take out the word ARPA.
Okay.
And just leave it as from local funds.
Well, what we're actually voting on is the resolution. So this is what, this is the document that will get recorded in the record.
So can we, can we, Rick, or Counselor, I'm sorry, can we look at, at getting rid of the first whereas clause? Because that just, that talks about the Franklin County Fiscal Court, where we're going to draw the money from. And the rest of it, to me, looks okay.
I, I thought the way you all are trying to structure it, it's probably superfluous. It is true that the county has received ARPA money, you know, et cetera. So that doesn't add or take anything away from it. If you're talking about dedicating potentially general funds, et cetera. I don't think it makes any difference. The, the end line is the very one that, that the resolution is. That's where you say you're going to use ARPA funds. That's more critical than the first paragraph. To balance it out, I'd say take out the first paragraph and then modify the last paragraph, and then you got a pretty piece of work.
Yeah, but the, the last, the way I read the therefore clause, it says the plant board is submitting its application for state ARPA funds. So it doesn't bind the court.
No, there's, there's still, there's still, there's, that, that is, that is the, I gotta read the whole thing.
I am reading.
That's, that's, okay, good, because that is what they're seeking, is state ARPA funds.
Right, but it doesn't bind the county to use ARPA funds for them to, to seek ARPA funds.
That's correct. That's correct. That's what I said. If you take out the language.
I'm saying too.
As to the Franklin County supports it, et cetera, but Franklin County is not limited into what funds Franklin County dips into to support this project. That is correct.
Right, that's what, we're, we're saying the same thing.
Yes, ma'am. And, and, and the critical thing is that the target is, that is state ARPA funds that the plant board is seeking.
Correct.
Which requires a match of whatever format.
Yeah, right on.
And I, I'd also like to remind the court, and maybe, maybe this is just me, there's some crazy stuff going on in DC. Remember, they just about defaulted the debts here two weeks ago. And if you're relying on DC money, yeah, well, you can do it, but don't cash the check now.
Yeah. Amen to that.
So the resolution, the way, you know, it was drafted was to support the plant board's application. So we, we try to keep it generic in, in general, because that's what they need, is support. And so in my mind, that's what it does. But if you all want to change something, please just let me know and it's an easy fix.
We're listening.
I say just, I agree with Scotty Tracy, Squire Tracy, that we take out the American Rescue Fund Act in the first paragraph.
Right, that, that's, that's what I had pro-offered. So I, I think we just take out the first, the first whereas clause. Doesn't really matter.
Correct.
Is that the only change? Yes.
That's all I see. Counselor?
Uh, that was my understanding. Yes, ma'am, that's, that's correct. That's, we're moving swiftly on. And either way, you wouldn't commit to what funds at the end of the day is drafted anyway.
Squire Muller?
Thank you Judge. I think we're about ready to move on. And I just want to thank the plant, plant board. I know there's quite a few of you all on here. Uh, thank you for everything you do for our community and thanks for being on tonight.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time.
Uh, Judge, I would like to say one thing before we move on.
Yes, ma'am.
The Frankfurt Plant Board has members that are pretty smart and they're smarter than me. I think that we have not heard the final presentation of their proposal. I think it's in their minds, but they're not sharing with us. So I just say that because I feel like I need to. And as I said, they're smarter than I am, so I don't even have the questions. That's my opinion.
Okay. John, as I said, Gary and Adam, thank you. We will come, hopefully we've come to consensus to, that we can get this resolution adopted. We will get you a copy of this resolution. If it is passed tonight, Tamara will get it to you tomorrow, first of next week, and you'll have it as part of your application.
Thank you very much. Well, consideration, Judge.
Okay. And, and so once that goes in the process, we'll expect you all to get back with us. And then we'll, we'll iron out legal documents to move forward and all of that.
And we'll make sure when we submit the application to get you all a full copy of the application with all the information, all the data, all the financials, everything in there, so you all have it. You can distribute it. It's a public record and you can have it. And then any follow-up questions you have after you see it, just give us a call.
Okay, go. I see one more question before we go. I guess Squire Tracy's got one.
Thank you Judge. Adam, quick question. Would it be possible to get a, a copy of the, I guess maybe something other than that was in here, that just like the, the map, the coverage map of what is going to be, going to be out there?
Yeah, I mean, what about, yeah, we can do that. Probably needs to be electronic because of the sound.
Would you, Adam, would you send that to Tamara Harrod and she'll get it out to, to all the magistrates?
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
And I have just emailed everyone the revised resolution.
All right. Thank you Tamara. Thank you for that great work. Okay, great discussion and we're now going to move on. Now, we got something else that's important to our people and that work for us, are great employees. This, the next item is authorization to prove a proposal from the Johansson Group for a job va- job valuation and compensation study for all county government departments and elected officials. Betty Jo, I'm going to ask you to come on and you have worked so hard and I, to, to find out so much information. And thank you for this hard work. And you have Mr. Johansson on, but I'll let you lead into this.
Okay, thank you Judge. This is to accept the proposal to perform a complete analysis of the Franklin County Government positions, classifications and compensation structure in a base pay to determine if the current employee's pay is competitive. Currently, we have a compensation plan and it, and it is outdated. And it doesn't provide a process to remain competitive, to retain employees or to even recruit employees. And it doesn't provide an eternal growth within those classifications. So if, if you notice, as, as, you know, there's been a lot of research done lately of the city, Frankfurt Plant Board, KSU. And a lot of employers are utilizing a professional comprehensive provider to do these studies for their organizations. CAKO launched a salary survey in twenty nineteen. And, but this was not a complete compensation study. What they did was polled the counties to see where they are with their salaries. But this is going to be some really useful resources, hopefully for the Johansson Group to use, to help with our, our, our wages. And based on the information published in the State Journal, the county's average employee salary is over ten thousand less than the median average of the Franklin County household. And, and it's six thousand less than the city and actually eighteen thousand dollars less than the Frankfurt Plant Board. So I'm hoping the court will really recognize that we need to stay competitive. Wages are going up all around the board, but we have got to stay competitive, you guys, and retain the employees and recruit. So I'm, hopefully the Johansson Group will provide a non-discriminatory obje- objective plan to provide equal pay for our, for the surrounding counties and help us implement a process that, that we need. The county has never done a complete analysis of salary structure. And this will really help us in the future to stay competitive and to pay our employees equally for what they're doing. I provided you all some information in the. Um, I provided you all some information in the attachments, with the references I did, the proposal. Um, and um I would like to introduce Blair Johansson uh to answer any questions you all have, thank you Mr. Johansson, and he could explain the process to you guys, if you all have any questions on this.
Hang on Betty, uh Squire Moore's had his hand up for quite a long time.
Uh yes, I just wondering why elected officials are included in this?
Um, actually, uh when we had our committee meetings the last couple of months, um they're interested in, in doing it as well, because as the state, uh the county clerk stated, they're underpaid also, and um this would get a full picture of county government, so um he was interested in this study, so as the jail and the sheriff. So we just decided as, as a county as whole, that we would do all county employees.
It's not anymore for, to, to do them.
I, I understand that, but the county clerk, the sheriff, and the judge are all set by state, so just, uh.
No, it's not, it's not for, it's not elected official salaries, it's for their employees. Squire Moore.
It's not what it, it's just. Not what it says, so, right, well I'm asking.
Uh Betty, I, Tamra, look at that, he says it.
It does, it says and elected officials.
Okay.
County government departments and elected officials.
Elected officials, employees, we need to add employees.
Not what it says.
That's what I'm saying, we need to, I think that's an interpretation, so we'll add employ, elected officials, employees.
Okay.
Thank you Squire Muller, that's a good catch.
Thanks.
I think that would merit an apostrophe.
Alright, Mr. Johansson.
Sarah.
Thank you, and can you give us a brief overview of, of what the Johansson Group would be providing us? And that, and the process that you would go through to gain this information?
Yes, thank you Judge Wells, appreciate the opportunity, can you hear me okay?
Yes sir.
Okay, excellent, so uh the process that we work with, counties and cities, utilities across the country, um, we work with the internal process, where we're internally reviewing the job descriptions, and internally evaluating those against what we call compensable factors, to be able to put a value objectively for each position. A lot of organizations will just turn to the market, and let the market determine what that value should be, and how the structure should be put together. Uh, we've been doing this since nineteen eighty-five, have worked with quite a few public entities, where we're doing the internal evaluation, we're working with the department heads, elected officials, to make sure, with the HR department, make sure that the positions are current, and that it has the information that's expected or required for the position before we do the evaluation. We do the internal evaluation, and then we go external to the market, and do market pay comparisons for your market, both of public and private entities, publish studies that have both public and private entities. So then that way, we're evaluating the competitiveness of your pay, we're also evaluating the pay for each position, to make sure that we validate where the position should fall within the pay structure. The combination of the two allow us to then review your current structure against a proposed structure with recommended changes, so then as you're going forward, you're able to be uh more aligned with pay in relationship to what you expect for the position, and also be competitive in the marketplace. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Okay.
Mr. Johansson, we've surely been needing this, as part of this, uh what, one issue that it comes up with us every year, and that is, how do we keep that, keep the um adjustments relevant to the cost of living that are given to each employee year after year? Uh, so, can you elaborate on that a little bit? I think we've talked about that before, but I think we need to bring that back up.
You bet, so a couple of things that we're doing in this process, one, we're making sure that as your jobs change, um that you recognize what's happened to those jobs from a value perspective internally, so that's the internal process. Beyond that, is to make sure that your pay structure stays competitive over time. Uh, some organizations like to adjust their structure every year, we do not recommend that, because it creates pay compression. So we recommend that every few years, that you address cost of living issues, or the dynamics of inflation, so that your structure would move in an upward fashion, but not every year. More importantly, is to make sure that your employees are receiving adjustments in pay that allow them to um be able to um make a living, you know, to pa, pay for their family, and for the items that they need to pay for, for their families. So what we're recommending there is, is that you stay current with the market, from the standpoint that the market may be moving at two, three, four percent. This year, maybe moving higher because of inflation. So one side of the equation is to make sure that the pay structure stays current and competitive. The other side of the equation is that the employees are receiving adjustments in pay, hopefully each year, depending on what you can afford, that allows them to improve their overall pay on, one year to the next year.
Okay. Questions? Squire Muller, I think you were first.
Thank you Judge, uh thank you Mr. Johansson for being on here, Betty Jo and everybody, um I'm on this committee, it's been a, it's been a, a long, long road. Um, but for me, this started out as job descriptions, trying to figure out where people fit in each um organization, and now it's, it's, I feel like it's turned into something else. Um, I've talked to a couple of different counties in the last forty-eight hours. Um, all their job descriptions are done by their HR, and confirmed by, with their uh attorney, county attorney, you know, I talked to my sister-in-law, runs two hundred and fifty employees, you know, she has all the, the um job descriptions, so I'm not sure how, no one knows their job description better than our HR, so I just don't understand how, I feel like we're putting cart in front of horse, um if that makes sense, so I'm just curious why we aren't doing the job descriptions first, like we've been talking about, and then we can look into having this study done, thank you.
You bet, and I'll be happy to answer tha, that question. So, the foundation of the process is the job description, and most of the organizations to establish the job, work with the hiring authority, the supervisor, manager, director, for those positions, to make sure that the position description has the purpose statement and duties associated with that job. So that is the foundation, we use a questionnaire process, and work with the HR department, and the elected officials, the department head, for their positions, to make sure from a consistency perspective, that the job is comprehensive, and doesn't leave out any information. What's different is that organizations then have to determine what's the value of that position compared to other positions in the organization, and that's where we use our rating system, where we have fifteen factors, where we're using experience required minimum, management experience, if it's a management position, education, initiative and ingenuity, mental demand, problem solving, accountability. So fifteen factors that we're using at a weighted basis, and we're weighting the value of the position, not the person in the position, but the position itself. That allows the organization to have its job descriptions current, which is very important, and part of the process that we utilize to evaluate the position. And then as an objective outside party, we're coming in and looking at that job description, not the person in it, so we're not coming in with any biases, we're coming in with a fifteen factor system that we've worked with now for over thirty-five years. And using that system to then place positions in the structure, in the proposed pay structure, based on those same fifteen factors. And then we go to the market to validate that process, and also to make sure that your pay's competitive.
Okay, so, the, I didn't see it in here, so how, I guess how many days are you planning, because you're out of state, I believe, so what, what does it look like as far as, how many days will you be in Frankfurt, Kentucky?
Yeah, so good question, so part of the process is to sit down with the HR team, and to uh evaluate those seventy, r, right now, what we have is up to seventy positions in the proposal. And also, we have the ability through our software to be able to send the electronic questionnaire electronically to each of the department heads or the hiring authority, and they can fill that out electronically, and communicate with us on a virtual basis. So it's a combination of being onsite, and then also using software, be able to handle the work remotely.
Okay, thank you.
Squire Tracy?
Thank you Judge, um Betty Jo, quick question, um, over the last couple of years, how many employees have left county government?
I would not have that number exact, but I could run a report for you, I know we have a huge turnover at the jail. Um, I, I, I wouldn't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay, I know you mentioned that quite often, so I was just wondering, no, that's fine.
Give that to you?
No, that's fine, um, so that would go to my next question, so if a study is done, and the information that comes back says, the reason we can't keep people at the jail, is because we don't offer hazardous, hazardous duty retirement, is that something that will be looked at and seriously considered?
Is that, I think that question ought to go to Mr. Johansson, would you, is that the kind, would you have, would that be kind of a report that you would give?
You bet, so um let me just give you an active example, um we've worked with Washington County here in Northwest Arkansas, and we've been working with them for over thirty years now, on an annual basis. Just recently, this last year, evaluating their jail deputy positions, and the turnover associated with that position, and we, we ended up doing two things, one, we went in and reevaluated the position, and looked at it from the standpoint of risk associated with the work, as well as um what, what's required for them uh in, in that environment, um both uh from a safety perspective, as well as risk. So we actually upped the value of that position using the fifteen factors. So we did that, as well as use market pay comparisons on what's happening with with the high turnover, there's uh emphasis on trying to improve the value for that position, both monetarily and internally, from a job value perspective. The combination of the two allowed that position to go up to grade levels, so that we could address turnover, and we could also make the position a little bit more attractive from a pay standpoint. So, when we worked with the Washington County, we looked at both internally, what's happening with the position, and externally, what's happening with pay associated with jail deputies, because there's a lot of people who would prefer not to come on board or take that position because of what's happening, or what's required of that job.
Right, now, and you referenced two, two um salary steps per se, what, on, on average, what did those two salary steps pan out to be? Two dollars an hour, five dollars an hour?
You know, that's a good question, so um our minimum for that position was a little over fifteen dollars uh for the deputy, and we went up to a little over seventeen dollars now, as the new minimum for the jail deputy. Now, um, depends on the dynamics of Frankfurt and your community, but for Northwest Arkansas, it's a pretty significant amount of growth going on right now, and I think that that also played into part of increasing the value of that position.
Right, and my next question is for the committee, and, and I know it's something we ask all the time, but uh, and anybody on the committee can answer this one, what separated this group from the others?
Unless I missed something, I think this is the only organization that was brought to us.
That's right.
Yeah, it was, uh, you know, so, I, I don't recall us doing an RFP for it, or uh at least requesting proposals, which would be uh the thing we need to do, because the, the pricing came in, um where the pricing came in, it came in above the purchase authority.
Um Judge, actually the reason we didn't do that, it did not go over the thirty thousand dollars, and that's one reason we didn't do the RFP, is, is my understanding. Um, also, if you notice in your packet, CAKO provided information on a complete true compensation study, and it's anywhere from twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars, this is a great deal.
Well, I, I think, I think we're in this predicament, for the simple fact, as it's been stated before, it hadn't been done right, and if it's gonna be done right, let's do it right, let's bring in the county attorney to where he can say, hey, X, Y, and Z on his employees, the clerk can bring in his ideas, work with, work with you, um, the coroner, uh, let's bring them in, if we're gonna do it, and we're gonna spend it, let's do it right. I mean, if you've got uh people in the road department that are mechanics, they shouldn't be classified as road department employee, if they are a, a, equipment operator, as Squire Moore and Squire Sebastian knows, they should be equipment operators, they shouldn't be truck drivers. You're talking different skill sets, so if you're gonna do it, let's do it right.
Exactly, that's exactly what we're right.
We are getting, it's, it's amazing to me, it's just absolutely amazing to me, how many employees have contacted me that know more about what's going on with this than I do. So it's just amazing, a, and again, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right.
You, you, well, they've seen and heard that this were after, so that, I, I believe they're exactly right, they're concerned about their salaries. When they saw the newspaper that were, they're ten thousand dollars less than anybody else around, so I believe they have a right to be concerned about.
I, I agree with you one hundred percent, but I can only speak for the seven years that I've been on here, and you're looking at, well, Betty Jo, how, how is the la, how's the last six or seven years went in regards to raises? Sixteen, seventeen percent, I can't speak for twenty-five, thirty years, I can speak for seven, that I've been on here. So, and I've always supported county employees.
I know in twenty sixteen, when the judge at the time, he wanted some type of compensation plan, and we did it internally. It was not a true compensation plan, okay, we did the surrounding counties, and uh the salaries, and uh we came up with the plan, but it's a working, it was a working document. Um, so you're completely correct, it's all county employees, and we are gonna include their elected officials, because those salaries are, are, are below also, so that's why we wanna include everyone, and do our due diligence with these employees, and do a true compensation plan like it should be done. And unfortunately, I have a staff of one in HR, if I had a couple of staff of, I'm not sure for, about the Johansson Group, um how many staffs they have, we would be happy to do that, but we don't have the staff.
So, so.
Betty Jo, I didn't, I didn't say you did Betty Jo, I'm just saying, and you brought back up elected officials, it's elected officials staff.
Correct.
So, if we're gonna do it, let's make sure to do it, because as, as soon as this goes, if you don't include them, we know that Rick Sparks is coming back saying, hey, my staff is this, and we know that the county clerk is gonna do the same thing, we know what's gonna happen.
One of the things, and Squire, I wanna just say from my end, and thank you for bringing that up, I totally support it. One of the problems that small offices are, like mine has, where it's just support staff, it's a dead-end job, and by that, I mean, there's no, there's no promotion up from, from legal secretary one, two, or three, despite the fact that I've got incredibly talented people, once they're hired, the only increment that they get is what they get cost of living, which frankly is, is as we know, below the actual cost of living, and it has been, it's never kept up. County officials' salary setbacks, uh, my law, can't do anything about that to change it. But I totally wanna be a part of that with my staff, I want to have a, a, pardon, I would like county government for efficiency purpose to have not only a class scale, and Squire Sebastian brought this up before, where you classify rank one, two, three of a given employee, so everybody knows where they're on in the ladder, and maybe, and I say maybe, truly optimistically, that may be the silver bullet to the one most dangerous thing that the county does, well, besides other duties as assigned, where you don't know what job you've got from time to time, but the uh the actual possibility of not having that leapfrog thing, when you hire somebody at a higher rate because their scale went up. And if you could solve those two problems, my friends, members of this court, just, just two, I'll give you two thumbs up right now, that is a, a horrible, horrible problem that you all have faced and argued and deliberated for years, I've seen it. And it it affects your employees and it affects it affects your work. But to have that kind of maybe classification, know what jobs they're supposed to be doing versus what they actually are doing, because please see above, other duties assigned, and you can streamline your your thing. And I'm totally in favor, Scotty, or Squire Tracy, of joining in on that in every way that I can with my staff to get everybody on the same page.
Thank you.
Mr. Johansson, you heard Counselor Sparks. What would you have to say about those step increments in in ranks? It is part of your plan?
Uh, Judge, what we do is be able to evaluate each of those positions. And if there's enough distinction between one legal support position and another legal support as far as the what they're required to do, what knowledge it takes for them to complete the work, the experience base, and if there's enough difference, then we can create a law clerk one, a law clerk two. That's another part of the process is to make sure that there's enough of distinction to justify a different level to the position as opposed to just saying we need one. So it's both a check and balance process of evaluating whether or not the position is distinct enough to create another level and support that level or to keep the position the same.
Jay LaBona, you've had your hand up or via screen hand for quite a bit. Go ahead.
Most of my statements already been covered, but I will, during this this budget session, we were able to give our employees a really nice raise, and then low and behold, surrounding counties went to sixteen and seventeen dollars. So my turnover rate is still a battle each and every day. Just wanted to make the court aware of that. We're appreciative of the raise we got to give. But Wolfher County went to seventeen dollars and just recently Shelby County went to sixteen dollars. So it's like we're in an NFL draft all the time at the jail. So I just wanted to make the court aware of that.
And Jake, before you get off, uh, do a lot, does a lot of your turnover happen within a short period of time, once they're hired?
Yes.
So it's not about being on hazardous duty retirement because there's really not so, no such thing as hazardous duty. All of this retirement now is not even.
Look, I'm always for hazardous duty, but nowadays with tier three, it's twenty-seven year retirement. You know, it it's it's about the same as as anything else, so I don't really see the battle for it. If it was still tier one at twenty years, I'd be fighting all the time for it because I'm blessed to have it. But at twenty-seven years, if we just pay our employees better, then, you know, hazardous isn't really the the way to go. And I hate saying that because I love hazardous duty, but at tier three, it's just, it's about the same.
Thank you. Squire Muller?
Thank you, Judge. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm all for employees. I mean, you look at this this court, I think we're pretty progressive. I mean, last court, we we helped them out with their health insurance. I mean, I don't think anybody can say we don't care about our employees. I'm just also wondering how this doesn't go to an R F P because to my knowledge, it's a twenty thousand dollar limit. So I don't know, I'm just trying to figure figure that part of it out. But, you know, I do think our employees are the most valuable thing we have in the county, and, you know, they need to be taken care of. So I'm just trying to figure out how we're gonna get that.
Judge.
Yes, sir.
Clerk, can you, can you let me know what's the total for the R F P, please?
The one in the packet?
Uh, no, what's the total that we have to send out of R F P?
Twenty thousand. It was never changed per the code.
Thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Did somebody explain that to you?
Speaking of silver bullets, some problems that need to be solved, that's one of them I have to.
Thank you, but it was, it was never changed.
Admin code states that the bid, uh, let me tell you, it's set the same as the state. The state is currently at thirty thousand dollars, and our admin code states.
No, we did, we discussed it very first year of our admin code, and the amount was specifically brought up to say, do we want to change it from twenty to thirty? Who on this court remembers that? And and we said in the administrative code discussion, we did not want to move that number. So that number has not moved from twenty.
You did not move the number. You're exactly right, but the language states that it moves along with the state rate.
That that portion is at odds with the very specific thing we discussed at twenty thousand. And and the court was very clear where it stood on that.
Counselor Sparks?
Yes, sir.
Are we, are we able to to move forward with this below thirty thousand with the Johansson group and and prove him as a, as a, a group, or do we have to to sit, do R F Ps?
That's an interesting discussion that never was even brought up at committee. I viewed this as a professional services, so I don't know. Maybe I'm sideways on this whole thing. That that code limit needs to be fixed. On the other hand, you're not bidding out for construction services, et cetera. I think it's a professional service.
Professional services, do they have to, do you have to bid out for professional services?
My understanding is the answer to that is no. Please someone correct me.
I I think, Rick, unless it's a university providing it, if a university was doing this, we wouldn't have to bid it out.
I've never heard any such thing. I, that's why I said, please correct me if I'm mistaken. But I know in the committee discussions, et cetera, that was never brought up at all.
Well, I think the thing is, is we're all trying to, or or at least from my perspective, I want to make sure, be- because we've been in, things have been in the newspaper, and we are all acknowledging we want to do this thing right. And so perhaps there is some other market a- and may, this may be the best thing out there for us to do, the proposal we have in front of us. But if we are not looking at multiple pro proposals to make sure this is the best, how can we assure to our employees that we don't get back in the same boat that we all say that we're in now? I think we're trying to do the right thing and advance it as quickly as we possibly can.
Well, that wasn't the question I was asked, but I I completely, around the, that's right. But regarding the cost, et cetera, that's a different, that's a different question. Table, let me read for, I'll make sure I know in time.
I have, I was trying to look. I have your legal opinion somewhere, Counselor Sparks, on this, and where you stated that it does, the way our admin code is structured, that it does move along with the state rate. If the state were to drop it to ten thousand, then we'd be handcuffed at ten thousand.
That is correct. I brought that up once, I brought that up once before, that that inconsistency needs to be fixed. It is benchmarked to the state.
But but we also.
But it's a two-part.
Court, the very first year, the twenty thousand number was discussed, and this court voted. I think it was one hundred percent not to raise it to thirty. There may have been one person because it was that committee roundtable thing that we were doing with the administrative code. It wasn't a formal, formal vote. But this court decided at that meeting, because I've still got notes on it, to not move that number from twenty to thirty specifically.
Okay, so now we're doing, they have professional services, that the council believes is professional services, which allows us to move forward. And I guess the the, you just turn it down if you don't want it. If you don't want to do it, then turn it down.
We need to fix that, folks, we need to fix that inconsistency, but it is benchmarked.
All right.
I remember that we did vote not to raise it.
It it was not an official vote. It was a discussion consensus. Uh, Squire Blackburn?
Yeah, thank you, Judge. You know, I remember not too far along, far back recently, when there was a vehicle bought, Scotty Tracy brought this up, that it was over the twenty thousand. And Rick, Counselor Sparks, stated that 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 was the case in that meeting. I went back and watched it three or four times. And we didn't do anything about it. I thought it would trigger an automatic. The code wasn't followed, the admin code wasn't followed. So you know, with with Counselor Sparks saying that in that meeting, it it, you know, and and we still have staff believing otherwise, it is something we need to address and and fix. I'm absolutely for a study. I'm absolutely for getting our employees paid at an amount commensurate with with what they do and and the service and the quality they provide for the people in Franklin County. I think it's it's an understatement to say that that they're the best asset the county has is our employees. They continue to always do above and beyond what they're asked to do with less resources than others providing the same amount of service. So I I think it's something that that we need to discuss about the the admin code because it was crystal clear to me where it stood. We did discuss, you know, Deputy Judge brought up that it moved with the the state rate, and we discussed that, and we did a hands-up vote. And whether it was a, you know, a legal or formal vote, it was a vote. So I would hope to think that when we do a a vote like that, that it's taken seriously and 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 that's how things are. So that's where I am with that. I'm for a study. I'm for fixing our employees' pay, but I'm for doing it the right way. And and that's, that's where I'm at.
Oh, what are you defining as the right ways? Squire Blackburn, because I, because I don't want to bring this, this is the third time we've brought Johansson Group here.
Well, it's.
It is.
Is it professional services? So we're we're just gonna change the name and, because I think Betty Jo said the thirty thousand dollars, Tamara said the thirty thousand dollars. We bring counsel in, let's change it, let's, let's make it work however we can. I get that. I don't know if there's agencies that do this. I'm sure there are. I I'm assuming Betty Jo got their name from the plant board, from the correspondence that I see with them. And she has some great references from folks. I don't doubt their ability or or their services at all. And and I see that, you know, CAKO said that it ranges from twenty-five to a hundred thousand. I guess CAKO has a lot of experience with with people doing compensation studies when they decided to do one for the whole state. So anyway, that's, that's just where I'm at.
I'm not sure I got my answer, but we'll move on. Squire Muller?
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Hanson, don't don't think this is against you personally or anything. This is, this is us trying to work some stuff out here. But I just want to reiterate, I remember the conversation because I remember Squire Moore and John Mitchell were super upset because he couldn't buy buy that grade all because we had set that twenty thousand dollar limit. So I just, I want to get it out there. I just, I was gonna like games. I just want to be straight up and let's let's get going.
Believe you me, we're not trying to play any games. We're trying to help the employees here, trying to do something for the employees. I don't know. I I actually, I feel sorry for you, Mr. John Johansson. I apologize. I thought that the last time we met, we weren't able to go with it because we wanted to hear more about what CAKO wanted. We got the information from CAKO, and obviously, that's not enough. So, Mr. Johansson, we'll just bring it to a vote here in just a few minutes, and if it's voted down, God bless you and thank you for your patience with us, but.
Hey, Judge, I'd like to address some of the confusion here, and and I really am puzzled by it. I remember well the discussion because I was the one that had the discussion about the pros and cons of modifying the procurement level. The issue is and has always been that we were benchmarked to the state level. The states changed it. The question presented was whether you wanted to lock it into a different amount, never address the benchmark question. And unfortunately, the benchmark paragraph remains in the administrative code. We're still locked in with the state benchmark. I said that the last time, that it's an inconsistency that needs to be fixed. I reached out to the members of the court that that needs to be fixed. Whatever your pleasure is, do it, but it needs to be corrected by a vote and amendment. Squire Sebastian and I have talked about the inconsistencies. Squire Tracy and I have talked about the inconsistency. It is benchmarked with the state. If you want to set a firm level, that needs to be eliminated and pick the amount, but you'll be locked in. It's in the code, it's benchmarked to the state. This has never been an issue in this entire discussion about this group, but it has been discussions about previously, and so I'll invite the court yet again. It's an easy fix on that inconsistency to prevent any confusion ever again, if you choose to do it. If you don't, in the spirit of Halloween, this ghost is gonna keep rearing its head and every good idea that you face when it reaches that pretty common level. So take that advice to heart and let me know if you want that clarified and fixed.
It is an amendment called change, which will take two readings.
That is correct, and I invited that the last time.
Squire Blackburn?
Counselor Sparks, so when we were having that admin code discussion, and we had our informal vote about that, and it, was there a reason why it wasn't changed? Because that's exactly what we were discussing.
That means nothing.
That's called an informal vote. That's called a discussion.
So we 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 made changes with informal votes. We've made, we make changes with informal votes with on the budget when we're going through.
Okay, you're 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 correct, Squire. You're you're, I totally understand where you're getting from. You make all kinds of preliminary changes, and then you vote on them two readings as an ordinance.
So we made the changes in our admin code discussion, but we never, it was never put before us to vote, even though that was our intention and our desire.
There was never an amendment on the two readings on the administrative code to change that. It still contains the benchmark.
But that's what I'm.
So you're correct. The discussion, you can have all the discussions you want to, but until you have two readings and a vote on an ordinance, it doesn't change it.
So who's in charge of changing that on that paper and putting it before us? Like, we voted on it because we were gonna change it, and it didn't happen. Where where was that?
You're answering your own question. There was never a first reading of an ordinance amending the administrative code to eliminate that benchmark. There was never a second reading.
It was never put on the agenda.
It was, it was not put on the agenda, even though we discussed it, and that was the reason we discussed it.
Ordnances require advertising and a first reading and a second reading. That's correct.
Okay.
There was, and that's why I said the last time, I said this, it's an easy fix. It's a very easy, it's such an easy fix. Hell, I can probably draft it myself without having any paperwork.
Uh, just for Squire Blackburn's information and all of you, I just told Tamara to make sure it's on the twenty-eighth agenda. Rick, if we get with you at that time.
Easy done. Put it on for first reading, and then you all can deliberate between first and second, and tell me what you want to do.
Okay, and so we were, it was when we were doing work sessions. So we, and typically, you all do like a general consensus, you know, nod of approval. And I think at that time, we were continuing some admin code reviews, and we never completed the entire review. So none of the changes that, you know, we talked about ever came to fruition because of that.
Because that's supposed to be a continuation discussion.
That's actually untrue, because Counselor Sparks and I have talked about some things, and those things have been changed in there. He can call them technical or whatever you want, but they were changes that have been discussed that are in the current administrative code because they were wrong in the.
Okay, well, I'm not trying to lie here, so.
No, no, I'm telling you what I recall. All I'm saying is that that there have been changes to this code. There have been.
I didn't say there hadn't been any changes.
You, you know, I think we're gonna stop here and take a recess.
Put it on a first reading and and let's just fix this problem.
I've said we're gonna do that. We've gone three hours, and we're not even halfway through the agenda. There's a whole lot of discussion going on. Mr. Johnson, all I can say to you is thank you, and we'll let, we'll be back with you.
Yeah, Judge Wells, I'm sorry. Judge Wells, thank you, and we're not going anywhere. We've been here for quite a few years. We are familiar with the Frankfurt market because of our work with Frankfurt Plant Board over the last six years. And we've worked with cities and counties and understand the deliberations that you have when you're making decisions, so we're not offended by this at all. We're happy to be available once the decision's been made.
Okay, thank you. Squire Muller, can you, you go ahead, because after your question, we're going to recess.
That's fine, Judge. Thank you. Betty Jo, do you think it would be possible, if if this passes, and I can't speak to anybody else, that the committee's involved in this process?
Um, I believe not.
He's always been involved in this process.
I mean, from from moving forward, you know, i- i- if we were to hire the Johansson Group, you know? Kind of like the park project, you know, we hired his guy group and I feel like the park committee's worked very well together to, on hopefully a great project. So just throwing that out there, and I don't know how Squire Sebastian or Judge Wells feels about that, but that's just me.
No, that's a good point, I'd be up for meeting as frequently with the Johansson Group as I possibly could online. Because the key thing is, we're trying to get it right, we're trying to get it right for employees.
That's correct, I would welcome that, but also too, we need a non-discriminatory study. And that's the point, it's an independent study. Not the person, it's the position in itself. So that's one reason we reached out, because we need an independent, non-discriminatory, I don't need to be given my opinion on job descriptions, it needs to be up to the department heads and the Johansson Group. So that would be up to the judge with that, as long as you all have the hours to put into this, because you all do work full-time hours as a magistrate. So yeah, as long as the judge is okay with that and as long as it's independent and it's non-discriminatory on the person and just the position, the more the merrier.
Yeah, there's no reason we can't have updates, the compensation committee can have an update from the Johansson Group of where they are.
And I would agree with that.
There's no problem with that.
I would appreciate that, and the thing is, is we're not going to see names on any of this anyway. It's position-driven, should be, should be.
Yeah, that is correct, because you all know each person in each position now.
There's only, yeah, that's another story. Okay, recess, five minutes, eight o'clock when we come back, hopefully we'll be through by midnight. From recess, there you go. He's already been trick or treating, so.
I called out.
There you go.
Uber's a great, I mean, Grubhub's a great thing, guys.
There you go. There were a couple of department heads, I saw Chief Hutcherson had just come on as we were leaving. Chief, I'll go back to you if you would like to say something.
Judge, I'm here, it will not let me turn my video on, says I've been.
That's fine, we can hear you, we can hear you.
Very good, just a I mentioned that, and as I did with the, there it goes, as I did with the committee, the benefits committee or the compensation committee of how important I think it is to have the study done. I think it's a great value at 28,000. We've needed it since the, sorry about that, guys, we've needed it since the early 90s, which I advocated back in those days.
Who's that other voice?
Hipset Radio.
I'm at the firehouse, we've got a run going on.
All right, well, Chief, I think we got your point that you've advocated for it, you need it, you think it's important. And we appreciate, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else, any other, go ahead.
Judge Wells, this is Robert Hewitt.
Yes, sir.
I would also echo what the chief said, I think the study is long overdue. I think you can correct a lot of the concerns and struggles that the court has dealt with. I appreciate Betty Jo taking the initiative to reach out to companies to have a study done and I hope that the court will follow through through whatever process it takes to hire a firm to at least do a study, thank you.
That means you're favored to win by 21 and a half points, that means we're gonna kill.
Oh, yeah, we're getting killed.
Okay. Harland's iPad, not sure who that is, needs to mute. Harland's iPad needs to mute whomever that is, don't know, but you probably don't want to hear your conversation.
I'll make one comment before I eat my Snickers, and I'd like to commend the court for its continued diligence. I think that, and I don't want any misunderstanding, I've not heard from any members that they were opposed to this, everybody uniformly said it's a good idea. If they want to modify some things to get a comfort level, to think that they're doing it in the right way, I think that's wonderful. We'll get that addressed, but I don't want any misunderstanding from anyone that I heard speak that there was any fundamental disagreement about the necessity or the benefits to be obtained by such a thing. I only heard the court say they want to do it in a manner that they feel comfortable with, and I thank them for that.
All right, seeing no one else, we're going to move forward on the next item on the agenda and that is, we ask Sheriff Quire, if you're here, you've got one, two, three items, we'll let you begin with your authorization to receive amended report of the audit of the current sheriff for January 7th, 2019 through December 31st, 2019, that's an amendment to the audit report.
Yes, Judge, that was where we had the Attorney General's opinion on the movie night and the donation account. So we just wanted to update that audit.
Okay, you want to go to the next one, authorization to the sheriff's 2021 amended revenue bond.
Yes, sir, there was some verbiage that come out that auditors and CAKO decided that needed to be updated and this actually happened in all 120 counties. So I thank the Deputy Judge and Fran for working on that with CAKO and getting it updated, so we'll be covered.
The next one is authorization to declare property as surplus for disposal by auction.
These are just cars that I made the notes on the letterhead that I wrote, so you could see what the mileage was and the value and what all is wrong with them. So basically, we're trying to clean up our junkyard, it's kind of accumulated. And I know when we built that garage, we pledged that we wouldn't be bad neighbors and we try to keep it clean, but it seems like it keeps piling up. So we're just trying to get those things auctioned and out of there.
Yes, and that actually has been amended since it was sent out, two vehicles, the second item and the third one have been surplus to another department.
That was gonna be my comment, the Fords are capable, the others are not. Keep that in mind when you're purchasing, Sheriff.
We talked about that earlier today, we're working on it.
Squire Moore, I guess you have another job for some Ford dealer across this area, so that's good. Squire Muller, you had your hand up before Squire Sebastian?
I did, I didn't realize the sheriff had one more, I was gonna ask him if he knew anything going on with his water line for that exterior building, that evidence room, I think they're using it as.
That's not on the agenda, you can't bring that up.
Sorry.
Okay. All right, Squire Sebastian?
Thank you, Judge, Sheriff, I just wanted to check, you'd indicated, or the clerk had indicated that two of the Ford vehicles, the only two Fords on here, had been transferred, where did they get transferred to?
The Expedition went to Jeller Rogers, or, excuse me, Jeller Bana. And the 2008 Explorer went to the Park.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, next item on the agenda. Melanie, thank you for being on, you've only been on for three hours and I apologize but we're just grateful that you're still here and we're going to talk about something that I think we've all been impressed with, the art sculpture that's on the Judicial Center's portico and we thank you to be here, let's talk about it, we have some options and we'll let you explain those.
Yeah, thank you, guys. So when we initially installed that sculpture, it was two years ago and it is part of the Arts Downtown program. And those sculptures were placed temporarily as part of a two-year exhibition. And so it's time now for that sculpture, all of them, to move out, to rotate out and for new sculptures to come in. So several of those sculptures that are on exhibition, including the one at the courthouse, are for sale. And I reached out to each of the artists before committing to their de-install dates to see if the pieces were still available for sale. And if they were, that I would, you know, contact each entity where they're located to, you know, let that group know that it's time for the sculpture to move out unless the entity is interested in purchasing the sculpture. So the piece that's at the courthouse, and I think you guys have an image of that, but I think you all know which piece it is. It's by John Parker, he is from Pennsylvania. And so I'm here today to let you know that it's time for that piece to move on unless the court is interested in purchasing that. The county is interested in purchasing that and then it would become, you know, county-owned property and would be an asset of the county. So the artist, you know, originally had submitted a price of $18,000 and he said, you know, since it's already there, it's installed, he wouldn't have to come back and get it and take it and, you know, install it somewhere else. That he would offer a discount of $3,000 and would sell it then for $15,000. So I am just reaching out to you guys, I didn't want it to disappear and then people say, oh, no, we love that sculpture, we wish we could have kept it, and then, you know, I hadn't brought it to you. And then, you know, I hadn't brought it to you. So I'm bringing it to you now for that. Yes, and I will answer.
I'll, I'll, Melanie, you, we have an option, the other option, and what you discussed is we can put another piece in. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we are in the process of conducting another national call, which is how we got the first group of sculptures to install as part of the exhibit. That call will, it's essentially an RFP, will end on the 20th of this month. And then we will review those and make selections for new pieces to be installed downtown. If there's a piece that is appropriate and, you know, scale-wise and content and material and everything that we think would be a good fit, we certainly would bring that back to you as an, as an option. Yeah.
Okay, Squire, Squire Moore, you've had your hand up, sorry.
Yes, this sculpture is nice, but I'm ready for something else. Not interested in purchasing it. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thoughts, Squire Blackford?
Melanie, thank you so mu, uh, am I on here? Yeah. Melanie, thank you so much for coming tonight. I know the arts are a huge thing in, in our community and, and I enjoy seeing them. I'm kinda like Squire Moore. You know, I, I wanna see new things, exciting things. And I was hoping, you know, the, the judge asked you the question about moving other art in, and I'm glad that he did. So we will possibly have that opportunity. Do you know if any of the other sculptures that are down there, if any, anybody's purchasing those?
No, we have one that's on an extended loan. And so the, that entity is paying for an additional year of the lease because that was not in our budget. You know, our budget to pay the artist came from other funding. So to extend it was not in our budget. But that entity wanted to do that, so they're doing that with that piece. Yeah. And then we own one of the other ones, the sculpture park owns it actually. So the bookstore wants to keep the piece that was in front of the bookstore, but.
Wonderful, wonderful. Could you tell me which piece is gonna be staying for a little bit longer downtown?
The one at West Banko.
Okay, I thought so. Good. Thanks so much.
Yep.
Squire Muller?
Melanie Chakaya said I could come get that one anytime I wanted, by the way.
Okay, well, I'll have to check our contract, but.
Hey, thanks for everything you do. I, I do, timing's a little weird right now, you know? I mean, we've talked to you as a court about doing some cool things out at the Lakeview Park. So I'd like to maybe talk to you about that because I know the Hitchcock, Hitchcock Group is, is kinda in the process of doing the, the final plan and everything. So I'm hoping that you and the organization are willing to maybe give some input because I'm, I'm hoping that's gonna be in the near future for, for the park. Thanks.
Yeah, Squire, don't forget, bring her to the park committee to talk about it, okay?
Yep.
With, with the committee.
No, absolutely. That, that's what I meant, Judge, being involved with the committee. Yes.
Okay. So Melanie, it looks like, the, I'm not hearing from everybody, but if we take this away, will you get back? First of all, we wanna make sure also that the judges are good with it at the Judicial Center, the courthouse. Everybody's good with it. It's like last time, we went through a kind of a protocol down the line. We got it back to the court for the approval to go. So let's go with that same process and, and, and see about getting a, another exciting piece and get, get that out and around our community. The program is awesome. What you've applied for with this grant is awesome. It is so great to see all the different types of art across our community as we walk down the streets and sidewalks. It's awesome. So you deserve a great big round of thank you for, for that. So we appreciate that and look forward to, to new art.
Sounds good. I will keep you guys in the loop.
All right. Thanks so much, Melanie. And thanks so much for being on for so, such a long time.
Sure, you're welcome.
You, you were, you learned a lot.
I always do. Thank you, guys. Good luck tonight. Yeah.
Yes. Oh, yeah, we're gonna need it. And, and, and the best to you and, and the sculpture park as well.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Okay. All right, now we are just right at halfway through, everybody. Here we go. The next page. This next item is authorization to prove a resolution authorizing the county judge's executive to execute all documents necessary with Farmdale Sanitation District to provide funding assistance for repairs to the Cool Brook subdivision treatment plant, and that process is in place. And Ms. Annie, do you, do you wanna help a little bit on this? I think you, you were instrumental in saying that these monies would not go. Hey, Charlie, Bob, I didn't know you were there. Good, good to see you. Could you give the court, before Annie comes on, an update on what's being done at the plant to get in this process?
Yeah, we have Carl with us as well. The, the treatment plant right now has been pumped down halfway, I guess, if you consider the four tanks. We've got them down below the critical line while we're in the process to get materials to get in to do the repairs. We have purchased pumps and blowers that are needed to repair the plant. But as y'all are aware, it's hard getting materials right now. So they're very timely getting. But we've worked with the local utilities, getting some utilities moved. We've got a, an idea, hopefully here in the next few weeks that'll come in to move the utilities closer to the easements so we can get crane trucks in to, to lift steel in, to get those welded and fabricated into place. Carl would probably be the best person to explain everything that's going on. But we were actively, seems like every day, we're in communications trying to make this a better process for our, our neighbors, basically.
But. I'm sorry, in the meantime, we've been out, the smell's down, the creek, the creek is a little cleaner now. Things are, I'm knocking on wood, moving in the right direction.
Correct. They, they are. But the plant can't operate at this level. It can operate, the capacity that it has needs to be full to do its normal job. And Carl is, is keeping everything at a safe level. So we don't have, right now, I know Lambert and Marty were a part of a discussion with us. But we've, we've got some tank walls that are, have stress fractures in the steel. And we don't want those to, to split and dump into the creeks. Plus the plant failures that we're dealing with. We're, we're dealing with 40 years of no maintenance. And the last few years that we've had, our board, I've been on it a short time, but our board has been on it. We've been trying to actively fix everything we have. And again, this is just one plant we have, but it's probably the largest. But it was pretty bad about three weeks ago. And we had to, we had to get everything pumped down, but it cannot do the capacity that we're, we're dealing right now. So we have to do these repairs to safely provide service to the Cool Brook subdivision. But it's, it's kinda a conglomerate because it is a fairly large neighborhood with multiple pieces and parts. And most of them are not working. Majority of those are not working. So Carl, are you on here?
Yes, I'm on here.
You wanna give some thoughts and?
Any more update, Carl, on, on anything else that's going on at the, the plant?
Yes, like Charlie was saying, we have Tank Three and Tank Four. They're three, three quarters of the way pumped down past the careful damage on the tanks. We do have two new pumps ordered. They're expected to be here within three, three to four weeks. We do have blowers and motors on order, trying to get those in here. Working with contractors, I'm trying to get them in to get the crane, crane in to be able to start doing the metal repairs on the tanks as well. We do need to remove some tree work that needs to be done around the tanks so it's easier to get the equipment in and out. I have been in contact with the city to help us come in and pump some more of the water out as well. We're negotiating kinda with them on the timeframe when they can come in and help us as well.
Okay, questions for, we'll get you, to you in a second, Annie. Questions for Charlie or Carl on, on the plant itself, Squire Muller?
Thank you, Judge. Gentlemen, thank you for being on tonight. I guess this is for either one of you. I know you haven't been involved too long. It doesn't sound like over there. Do you have any idea why, why for, you know, 20 plus, 40 years, whatever, they, they haven't been doing any maintenance? I mean, it seems like, I don't know, it's just kinda mind-boggling to me how everything's coming to a head right now, you know? Any, any idea why?
I'll, I'll answer that, Charlie, because you hadn't been on there. I've been around a while and, and, and as, as Lambert knows and Squire Booth, that the, the reason is because they were private plants.
There's no money in it for them. There's no money in it for them to make improvements.
That's exactly right.
What they could.
As, as I, as I told you a, a while back, Squire Muller, they were, they made a lot of money in the beginning. And, uh, because nothing, nothing happened to them. They were all operating fine. And then as time went on, there were problems and they had to put more money in and problems and put more money in. And they were losing money. So at, at some point in time, there, it switched from a real big moneymaker to it wasn't making money. And so I, I, I can recall for, for 16 years going out to Cool Brook, going to Evergreen because the sewers were flowing out in the street because the sewers were backing up into people's homes and trying to get, and Marty, you know about this, trying to call this guy from Cincinnati, and I can't even remember his name. But he had, he had those two plants and he would never answer his phone. And I would call the health department on him, the health department with Sidi, and that's about all you could do. And you could not make him put any money into it. Finally, what happened was is that he saw that he had to get out of it. So he sold it for a dollar and, and got out of it. And that's where we are.
What, what, I'm just curious, when did that happen, Judge? When, when did the guy get out of it?
Uh, I believe, uh.
I think it's 2017.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, yes, 2017, yeah, something, it was 16 or 17, yeah.
Okay, and then somebody, just looking over this cost estimates towards the bottom, it says the pricing of all equipment does not include labor or installation. Have you all since then gotten any bids so we can kind of have a better idea of what this might cost?
On the piping work that needs to be done on the tanks for the airlift pumps, the return lines and scum lines, we're looking at $50,000 to $70,000 for that stuff. That's not including the installation of the pumps and the motors. On the installation of the pumps and motors and blowers, that's when we deal as timing material.
Okay, so will they give you any kind of a, a guesstimation or budget number? If it's, you know, 10,000 or 50,000? I mean, I'm just, we're trying to, I'd like to know a little bit more, if possible. I understand it's not that easy all the time, but I didn't know if they could shoot you a roundabout guesstimation.
They only gave me a roughly hour, hourly rate on the installation of the blowers and the pumps. And they was looking at around $50 an hour on installation on the blowers and motors.
Okay, thank you, Carl.
Any other questions? Annie, a call on you, but I wanna praise you because I thought one of the things that you really, a great idea was to get the model number for some of these pumps to see if any other sewer districts or anything else in the central Kentucky around here might have an extra one. And I, I know that Charlie, Bob, and Carl were working on getting the numbers after our last meeting the other day, or last week. But that was a great idea. It may not have worked, but it was a great idea to, to try to expedite getting these pumps or having that pump there. I see Squire Muller's got another question.
Well, thank you. So have you all come up with a guesstimation of, of what the cost is gonna be? Like the high, the high ceiling of, of this repair? Because I guess you're asking, I guess us to cover it, right? So I know this court's basically responsible. So I just, just curious what you all think the high number might be on this repair?
The high number off the top of my head would be closer to $3,000, $400,000. $200,000 we're asking for to get us started. And that's also with the money that the board has in their accounts to cover the rest of the cost.
Okay, so I guess my question would be then, what is your ask for the court to cover? Just so I understand.
I think we're asking the court for $200,000.
Okay, and you think that will, they'll take care of it?
Not all of it, no. But that's getting us started where we can control the smell and handle the flow.
Okay, thank you again.
Annie, you have anything?
Um, yes, one thing I wanted to mention, I wanted to send thanks out to the Bluegrass Area Development District because we've been working with Karen Leverens, who's head of the Water Management Council, excuse me. And on behalf of Farmdale, she's worked with us to get this emergency situation out to all of the funding agencies like Rural Development and some of those agencies. And Robert Hewitt has worked to, with Division of Water. They're going to issue their opinion on this emergency situation. And what we have asked for is that the court fund this project through the mechanism we already have in place that the treasurer and Counselor Sparks are familiar with, but not from ARPA funds. Because what we're asking is if grant funds are available out there. It takes a little while to find those. But if they do find grant funds, that they would be able to repay fiscal court. If we use ARPA funds, that would be difficult. But if we use, for example, funds that are revenue replacement or the, just like the CARES dollars that we're able to turn into general funds for that identity, that we use those funds because if the, if the opportunity arises and grant funds are available, Farmdale would be able to repay fiscal court.
Judge Wells, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I'm working directly with the Division Water Field Inspector and Enforcement Officer. We met out there the other day. In, in an attempt to support the funding request that Ann is, is reaching out for, as well as the Bluegrass ad, the Division Water will be providing a letter of the deficiencies. That will be available on Monday. And, and I just would like to remind the court that these plants are past their lifespan. They are antiquated. So support by the court and the City Commission to accept the agreement to pump to the city will be crucial for the benefit of the customers of the sanitation district.
Yeah, I think Rick, Rick Sparks came on. You, you, you enlightened him a little bit. Remember, it's not for the court to make this decision. It'll be up for the sanitation district to, to make that decision, right?
Yes, sir. I stand corrected. I stand corrected. Thank you.
And, and, and the reason, and thank you, that's an important qualifier. I'm, I'm glad the court is mindful of the independence and the autonomous entity that was created with Farmdale. My question was gonna be, and as the resolution is drafted, it's, it's open-ended. The mechanism wasn't defined. Back in 2017, the court used the function of a, or used the device of a promissory note, which will be due in 2022, June 30th specifically. What mechanism would the court prefer to use for this financial assistance? Did y'all hear me?
Yeah, just trying to think.
I was under the impression we were using ARPA funds.
Would an MOA?
Reimbursed if, you can't get reimbursed if you use the ARPA funds, according to Ann.
I was just saying that the, the way you, the discussion has, was directed toward the same way that we've got the current funding, and that was in the form of a promissory note that will mature next year.
Okay, I, I, let's make this clear. And Ray, you're the, you're the treasurer. Uh, uh, okay, I, I, let's make this clear and, and, uh, um, Ray, you're the, you're the treasurer, the, uh, the reason I started out, and it doesn't have to be ARPA funds, it could be COVID funds or however else it's lit, listed in the budget. But, um, this is an emergency. This is not, uh, this is not just giving them money to, to, uh, do whatever they want with. This is an emergency to fix this plant. Um, the goal has always been from day one and Squire Sebastian, uh, is, is adamant about this as well. Is to, to make, when this system comes into play, that this is affordable to the people in, in this area. And a, a part of the affordability is that these funds and the reason that these funds were initially, were initiated through the committee was to only pay back if they got grant monies that could pay, that they could use to pay this back with. Otherwise, they're not gonna be able to afford to, to pay this back i- i- at least in the, in the near future until everything gets going, which could be several years from now. So putting a timeline on it immediately, uh, in the, is, is gonna be very difficult, impossible for this board to do that. Ray, can you speak to that?
Uh, possibly. We, uh, we take in maybe forty thousand dollars a month in sewer fees. We pay out thirty to thirty-five thousand in normal costs and maintenance, which leaves us five to ten thousand a month for other issues. And with seven plants that have experienced thirty to forty years of corrosion and rust, that's not a lot of monies to have in reserve. No, we just, we can't afford the costs associated with welding this tank up at a Cool Brook because it's, it has a big crack in it from metal fatigue. It's not leaking now, but you can see moisture coming through it. Sooner or later, it's gonna pop.
Squire Blackburn, I'm sorry, you've had your hand up quite a long time. Sorry, missed you.
No, that's fine. Uh, Mr. Hewitt, you, you discussed, uh, talking that, about the end goal maybe being to, to have an agreement with the city and, uh, the sewer department to, uh, have them utilize their, their system to pump it to the city. Um, is there a timeline on that?
The agreement between the district and the city has, has been lengthy. Um, uh, the Division of Water Enforcement Division uh, has requested a meeting with Farmdale, City of Frankfurt, um, a- a- and me, uh, to discuss the issue as well as the maintenance at Cool Brook. That's scheduled for October twenty-eighth.
So, so would there, would there be costs involved with the county to facilitate helping that to happen if that's the direction? That, I mean, I know we ultimately, ultimately want to go that way.
No, sir, there's no cost.
I mean, I just want to go that way.
No, sir, there's no cost.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, uh, somebody named F. Lee is, uh, if you would, somebody named, somebody named F. Lee, if you would, you please. Andrew, can you?
Yeah, sorry, Judge. I was trying to find them. They're taken care of.
Okay.
All right, Squire Blackburn, so, so there, there will be no costs incurred by the county, uh, with this agreement or, or any relation to any fines imposed by Division Water because district is their own entity. Um, the, the Division Water recognizes the county as somewhat of a caretaker and a partner with the district. So, um, so I will be attending, um, along with, uh, city staff, um, the board, the sanitation district board, as well as the, the, uh, city attorney. So, um, this is probably more of an informational, um, activity, if you will. The, um, reports, the, the quarterly reports that are required by the Division Water relating to the agreed order are up to date. And there's just been a lot of attention on the district and the issues out there. So, uh, that, that is the, the request by the Division Water to, to have a meeting. But no, sir, the, the, the board, the sanitation district is responsible for their own fees, fines, um, and activity. I'm, I'm just there as a, as an assistant. I think Squire Blackburn was muted when he responded.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Robert. I, I, I really appreciate it. I know you spent a lot of time out there and energy and thought. Um, I just know, I, we, we, you know, we, we all deal with issues and sometimes we put a Band-Aid on them because we got something bigger coming and I would hate to see us put five, six, you know, them put five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars into something to make it work properly. And then it just be bypassed in a year or two years. But, uh, I know it's an emergency and it's something that, that the people in that area need to have taken care of.
Yes, sir, I agree with you.
Uh, Squire Blackburn, you, you don't know the number of times I've, we've, we've met with this board and talking about that, I, every one of them. I've said to Carl a week or so ago, when I was out there going through the plant and Charlie Bob too, Ray, hey, listen, guys, we gotta do what we can just to keep this thing operating and make sure it does, it keeps the water clean, going into the creek, into the people because hopefully in a couple of years, we're gonna have some new sewers out here. So you don't wanna, we don't wanna spend an arm and a leg. Uh, we want to keep, but we do want to keep it operating. We owe that to the residents out there. We owe them a, a system that they can use that doesn't pollute and doesn't smell where they can't come out of their house. So all of that's being weighed and I, that's a great point, Squire Blackburn. Thank you for bringing that up.
And, and Judge Wells, you're absolutely correct. This project will take a couple of years, um, for, for completion of design and construction. So therefore, investment needs to be made into the plants just to keep them operational. Uh, H and B has been authorized by the board to complete design of the pump station and the force main to the city. The city has already, uh, directed their consultant on the Twilight Trail Pump Station to accommodate for the plant board's flow. That's all contained within the COSOP agreement. So, um, once we get through this paperwork and get our, or the district get their plans to Division Water for review and approval, um, construction can begin. There's already been a, a field meeting with the Transportation Cabinet, uh, relating to the alignment of US one twenty-seven. The property owners have not been approached yet because the design is not one hundred percent complete. However, a preliminary property owner list has been provided to H and B. So we, the district is moving forward. There is progress on the project. And hopefully in a relatively short amount of time, um, this crisis can be resolved.
Good way to put it.
Squire, um, Tracy, let's go to you.
Thank you, Judge. So Robert, just to kind of circle back, you, you're, uh, you're saying about two years before sewer?
I'd say the earliest would be two years.
I would agree. The earliest would probably be two years.
What would the latest be?
Uh, I would guess four.
Two to four, so two to four.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's a simple. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I'd just like to thank Kentucky American Water for stepping in and taking over the one twenty-seven North, uh, station. Uh, Robert, you know, I kicked and screamed and everything else dealing with the guy that used to own it, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It, it's very frustrating trying to get in touch with a, you know, individual plant owner or plant operator. It's, it's extremely difficult. I, I struggled with, with the Farmdale systems for years, uh, never getting a call back, never having anyone get back in touch with me. It was extremely frustrating. And so I appreciate, you know, the prior court for establishing the sanitation district because at least now the residents of that area have someone, an entity they can reach out to when there's an issue. And, and I appreciate all the support that the court has given to the district, um, uh, to, to get them, you know, off their feet and on the ground. And they may not be running, they're kind of jogging a little slow, but their, their progress is being made. And the board, the, the board has been fantastic. And, you know, Charlie Bob is, is really going at it and I appreciate his efforts along with the rest of the board members. I, I can't say enough. They're, they are very, very eager to get this, this project going. Thank you.
Right, yeah. I can't imagine where, uh, one twenty-seven North would be without, uh, like I said, without Kentucky American and the Division of Water that stepped in and helped, Health Department. So, yeah, it was a, a team effort out there, so thank you, Robert.
Squire Blackburn?
Thank you, Judge. I just had two questions. I had one for you, I guess, uh, what, it said, you know, provide funding assistance and repairs. Are, are we gonna put a number on this resolution?
Yes, sir, two, two hundred thousand. That's what they're asking for in, in, in our meeting. Yes, sir.
Okay, and then secondly, uh, I guess for Anne, um, what do you think the, the probability of, of recovering funds that, that we expend on this would be?
Um, I think it's a possibility. It just takes a little time. The, the statement from Division of Water will be hugely helpful with that, with agencies like Rural Development. Um, the fact that there is a little bit of infrastructure money out there right now is also helpful. Uh, so I think we have better than usual chance of Farmdale being able to find some additional funds to, you know, if they have the cost overruns with the project or, you know, if they're able to pay back fiscal court. And that's one of the reasons that I say, uh, not to use, uh, funds that have the identity of ARPA at this time. Because if the funds that they find happen to be, be federal funds, it can be really, um, cloudy to try and repay federal funds with federal funds. So it's much cleaner if we, if we use, uh, um, dollars that are, have a cleaner identity such as general fund.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Okay, Charlie Bob, thank you. Carl, thank you. Ray, thank you. Um, keep up the good work. Bless you on, on what you're doing to, all that you're doing to try to keep this afloat.
Thank y'all.
Okay.
Judges and Squires, I, I, I still need some guidance. What instruments are you executing in furtherance of this? I don't know the vehicle. I don't know the mechanism. Is it a loan?
What do you want, from what you heard, Counsel Sparks, you give us guidance. From what you heard?
If I could untangle that forty and nine, I, I, I'm at a loss. There were a lot of different mechanisms discussed. I just need to know what the body politic wants to do. I pointed out that currently we have a loan that's getting ready to mature and referred to general funds. It's all well and good. Is it a grant? Is it a loan? Is it a gift? Is it donation? I just need to know what instrument needs to be drafted to, 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 to effectuate the body's desire.
Okay, Susan, thank you, Susan.
Just a starting point for the conversation, uh, to throw out there. Uh, based on some of the questions about the construction timeframe and because the, uh, entity is so young and their cash flow is not able to front the money, uh, but the, but the construction tri, timeframe may help them have more customers and a better ability to pay in the future. Uh, why don't you just throw out there just, uh, you know, five years, push it out for five years, make it a ten-year kind of a loan, a minimum amount of interest, but do put an, an interest amount associated with it. Say, you know, say the loan for ten years, the first payment in five, uh, you know, just something general like that to just, uh, get the ball started, uh, for discussion about the terms with the district.
Okay, Susan, so give us more concrete, uh, a ten-year loan, uh, with a minimum first payment in five based on, uh,
One percent.
Ten percent of, of the cost of the, ten percent of the, of the loan with no interest?
Well, an interest rate of one percent, maybe annually that might accrue, uh, but I'm not sure what you mean by ten percent, but just kind of a balloon payment at the end or start, uh, interest.
Well, you said you have one payment start in, in five years, so.
Yes, allow, but allow interest to accrue at a minimal rate.
The current promissory note is interest free.
Okay.
And I'm just referring to the two thousand seventeen note.
Okay, so interest free.
I, I, I'm, I'm not taking sides over there. Please nobody in this industry. I just wanted to know what I'm drafting.
Right. And.
So interest free for, free for ten years, first payment, ten percent of the loan amount to be paid, uh, in a, uh, in five years, and then from there on, ten percent of the remaining amount each year. Is that fair? So in other words, first year is twenty thousand, second year would be, uh, eighteen thousand, uh, third year would be, uh.
So basically structured over ten years is what.
Yes.
Any, any other thoughts about that, Court?
I think that's fine.
Okay, interest free?
Yes.
Thought you said one percent, Susan.
Well, I just heard the county attorney remind us that the initial, uh, loan was interest free.
I remember a very robust discussion regarding the terms of that as well.
Seed money, that was seed money. They now have some cash flow.
Not very much.
Hey, all I want to say is if we were to stop taking care of six plants right now, we don't have half the funds to take care of this plant. If that makes any sense to this court, I, I appreciate anything y'all can do. We're trying everything we can and we're trying to spread it across every customer we have. But to do that, we can't sink everything in one plant when we've got six other failing plants. And I do appreciate every thought that you can give us and I feel like we're a charity because maybe we are. Um, but in the same, we are trying our, our darndest, um, and this, this gig is not, um, well, it is, uh, very tiring amongst everything else. Um, but we, we want everything, everything that we're trying to do is for the greater benefit of everybody that pays, um, the rates and the water and, and the smell in their yards and all that. But you gotta think, we are a big area to cover with a bunch of failing plants that people have capitalized on with no maintenance. And I will say, anything y'all can do to help us will be very, uh, appreciated. We will try everything we can do otherwise, but.
How do you feel about ten years with, how about ten years with no interest?
I mean, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with anything at this moment, Judge, because as you seen, I mean, I felt like I was in a third war country.
Yes, sir.
Going across something the other day, and that's just one of our plants, and it's not the worst plant we have. Um, you know, we are trying, we are trying. That's all I can ask. Anything that y'all give us guidance? If you're all, will accept it, we're trying. Um, but I think the ten-year interest free would be acceptable, Judge. And if the court will hear it and come to some resolution, I think we'd be appreciative.
With a single balloon payment or with, uh, uh, some efforts to pay some installments after five?
I really wish Ray, if he's still in here, would answer that question because he would hear, uh, when we started this conversation, we were talking about ARPA funds. Part of the, what the county got to support sewer and broadband, that sort of thing. We can get a loan to CAKO, but it's gonna require a rate hike. And if we get a loan from you, a loan from CAKO, we're gonna have to raise rates. I mean, I don't see any way around it. If that's what everybody wants, that's fine, but we're gonna have to.
Don't want that.
Avoid raising rates as well.
So Susan, if we went ARPA route with these monies, they wouldn't have, we're basically saying you got ten years to pay it back, but they wouldn't have to pay it back.
But we, we've already made that discussion and Anne has made it clear that, uh, the ARPA, the administration of the ARPA funds for this purpose where we are already saying we're going to need ARPA funds to leverage other monies through some of the other appropriations that we have out there, uh, it. That we have out there. Uh, this would very much cloudy the issue, cloud the issue. So that's why it's being recommended that we use county funds, basically general funds, general county funds. To make this loan, make this in a form of a loan. If it's a ten year balloon payment at the end with a consideration forgive for forgiveness. You know, that's one way to structure it. We're going to be faced, I guess, with this thirty thousand dollar issue. Uh, I forgot uh what the maturity date was. For it, uh, uh, but evidently it's coming due.
Thirty of twenty-two.
Okay, uh, so if we're going to call that in, you know, on 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 the district. Um, or if we're going to renew it or extend it in some way and revisit it with what the board now. Uh, that that will be in the mix. But the idea is that I I believe districts can, like uh Ray said, can. At some point have the ability be uh to borrow money on their own, but they are so young. They don't really have that capacity, which is why it's uh being considered, I think, for fiscal court to loan. Uh, general funds to the district on their own with very favorable terms because it's an emergency. And it is a uh a basically a quality of life. Emergency for the entire entire county, so.
So I understand, I'm I'm what's what's the total sum again?
Two hundred thousand is the maximum and I it sounded like uh from the other gentleman that they're going to need every bit of that. But it would be, you know, specific to a specific scope of work for the Coolbrook plant. Uh, limited to to the uh materials or supplies or uh repairs. Associated with that alone. And as far as a timeframe. Because of the construction we were considering, I think the ten years might be a realistic timeframe. And then it's up to the court whether or not they want to make that interest free or expect some sort of repayment. And possibly just push it out to the very end, the same as we did with the thirty thousand.
Squire Booth, Squire Sebastian, there's in your district.
Yes, I think we should do it. Two hundred thousand, ten years, no interest. Balloon payment.
Squire Sebastian, you okay with that?
My only question is uh for the board members who are on here, how much pressure will that put on you? Toward that ten year period because certainly none of us have a crystal ball to know the financial position of the county and if they will call that due. So is that more pressure put on you or is it, does that ease the situation to have some sort of minimal payment? Kind of a pay as you go because I I know the financial position of the district and I understand what Commissioner Smith is is saying about that. So I'm I'm asking you all uh that question.
I think we're gonna have to take a hard look at raising rates so that we can cover these costs. If it's if it's not using ARPA money, we're gonna have to, the money has to come from somewhere. And we don't have it right now, or we wouldn't be wanting asking for it.
Squire uh Moore.
Could we uh do the ten year loan or a three year loan? And if they don't get the money or two year, I I don't care. Uh, still use ARPA funds to pay it? Because I don't I don't want to force them to raise rates over this emergency situation.
Yeah, I agree.
I want to get it paid off and get it down and down the road, be free and clear for the people out there.
Yeah, I I that that's a.
I don't mind using ARPA funds on it today.
Yeah. I don't, I I'm. Susan, so you're saying that because we may be using ARPA funds for some other projects. It's gonna cloud using this as a grant to the to the district?
Um, Ann, help me out on this. Uh, I don't, this would be just a separate project that we could.
Yes. If that's the will of the court to use ARPA funds, then um. You know, it would be, it would be a separate project. We've already talked about using ARPA funds to leverage the congressional appropriation. If we get that, uh, and but, you know, I'm fine with whatever the court wants to do on that. And then hopefully if they find some additional grant dollars, maybe they can continue to do additional improvements to some of the other plants. So I'm fine with whatever the court wants to do to benefit the district. I know they they're working really hard and uh, you know, trying to keep rates. Uh, keep from raising rates on their customers at this point, knowing that we have a lot of expense in this large interceptor project. That, uh, you know, they're gonna have to, there's gonna have to be some some kind of adjustment for for that kind of a debt.
Well, one of the things concerns me as far as that, this is an emergency. And with ARPA, all of the guidance I have had is we want subrecipient agreements. And um pretty pretty significant administrative processes that we don't have in place right now. If we do this right now as a loan, uh, they can start making expenditures. Uh, you know, from that on a reimbursable basis, you know, through a process with the county, starting next court. If they have that I that way I see it, as soon as we get this um, get an amendment in place to have the money available.
Susan, how come we can't let, I think we're, this is semantics. How come we can't say that out of the general fund, we are going to grant the Farmdale sanitation district? I don't whether it's ARPA or it's COVID or it's or it's just out of the general fund, two hundred uh two hundred thousand dollar grant. To uh in as an emergency fund to uh repair this facility. Well, if it's a grant, and why do we require them to to pay it back if it comes out of the general fund?
We'll we'll just, we'll need a subrecipient agreement for the grant.
And the subrecipient agreement be that these funds would be used specifically for?
Yes, it would have to be have specifics, the scope of the project, I believe. And as far as procurement goes. Uh, does the emergency eliminate procurement requirements?
Yes.
For the district?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Treasurer was referring though for an ARPA grant. The question I've heard the judge ask is why can't you just write a check to them for two hundred thousand dollars? I'm not aware of anything that prevents the court from giving a hands-off grant to them for two hundred thousand dollars. If approved, and that was one of the issues that was discussed, if you go through the federal grant. System, then it will require that internal bureaucratic infrastructure. If you just give a grant out of general funds.
Out of general funds, not out of.
That's why I wanted to distinguish between those those two.
That's right, out of general funds, not out of ARPA. And that was, and actually, uh, the 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 budget amendment that comes later in the court. That's that was the language that I used was recovered funds uh from our, the the money that we carried over into the. As you recall, at the end of the last fiscal year, we moved, I think it was one point six million dollars in recovered funds to the general. Back to the general fund from basically uh where we had leveraged CARES money. So that went back to the general fund. So if you want to, a- and that's really the way I've structured the budget amendment. Is that we will be amending in from the general fund surplus, two hundred thousand dollars, not from ARPA funds. It's from the general fund surplus, which basically uh. Uh, that two hundred thousand dollars was part was basically fed by uh the other federal monies that we got through CARES. So that certainly is available right now. It's is just, but it's but it's. You know, it's even if it's just a flat amount, we don't expect them to repay. We will still have a process for distribution for uh paying vendors. And verifying that that it's going towards the scope of the project, just for everybody's sake.
All right, can you do, can Rick, can we do that? Uh, we we've only been going four hours. We're all tired. We're trying. It's as hard for us to think, uh, when maybe we ought to adjourn and come back in the morning at nine o'clock. I don't know. We're we're not even halfway through this and we're.
I'm ready to roll the rest of the night. I'm getting my prime.
Judge, can I add something here?
Yeah, uh, we're not making anything easy here.
Judge, here's here's here's, let me just answer the judge's question if I may. Whatever you all want to do, you can do. You just need to decide what you're gonna do and we can draft it accordingly. That's that's the debate. Discussion is how to structure this. You've heard several options from a cash grant to a promissory note that's already in existence, to ARPA with the requirements. You just sometimes have to just.
All right, Squire Moore, what's your, what's your, what's your plans?
I feel like I'm on Survivor who can keep their hands up the longest.
I I hear you.
Why don't, why don't we give them a one year loan? So that we're not kicking it down to another court. This court would see it in one year and with the agreement among friends here. That at that point, if they don't have a way of of uh getting a grant to pay it back. We would forgive the loan and move on. Is that the way that Susan's talking about with with surplus funds and and get on with this?
Okay.
Counselor?
I'm a pen ready, just tell me.
What what uh what, why don't, why wouldn't we just say we'll give them a two hundred thousand dollar forgivable loan? And if and um Charlie, you all say to us that if you can, if there any monies come available. You give us back, you pay us back the money. Well, how come that can't be done?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Me neither, sounds good.
So so basically we're, so basically we're back to where we started from with a two hundred thousand dollar loan. Over the same ten year or uh ten years, five percent after, ten percent after five. The uh interest free and it's forgivable if you want to. You don't have to put that in writing.
Well, I said one year, so we're not kicking it down to another court.
One year, one year it is, two hundred thousand dollars, no prepayment, no nothing. It matures twelve months from now. Put the same or similar terms if you decide to execute on it, much like the other one, you execute on both or you execute on neither. So how's that, y'all?
I believe that makes Charlie Bob and Carl a little nervous.
Well, I mean, I'm saying that the court doesn't have to do anything. I mean, if you choose to. If you choose to present it, that's the court's call. I I I don't, I don't know, y'all. I I just, just tell me what to do.
Judge Wells.
Great.
Yes, sir. Two hundred thousand is more than what the district has in their account now.
I know, I know. There's no way they can pay it back. So we either grant it to them. Uh, or we make them pay it back over a ten, after ten years and they and they're still not gonna have it, but anyway.
They 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 said there, I mean, this is a better plan than a lot of them. We're never gonna see the money. Let's just, let's just give it to them and move on.
And if Robert's correct, in ten years, there's gonna be sewers. So, but I agree with Squire Moore. Let's, this way you, they get their money. They get their money and like Squire Moore is saying, you know, we'll worry about the details later.
Is everybody, is there, are there foremen of this court willing to give them two hundred thousand dollars and move on? One, two, three, four. We got four people that are willing to do it. So, uh, Rick, we write it up as a two hundred thousand dollar grant uh that will be used specifically for. The repairs uh and equipment needed. For the Coolbrook treatment plant. Charlie Bob, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And labor.
And labor, yes.
That's just a couple little words out of resolution blank number two thousand twenty-one series, paragraph the last, easy done, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bless everybody. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, so uh the next one, the next one is a first reading of Lawrence and Minin. Chapter thirty-one, uh, in section uh zero point one. I won't get into all that right now. The Franklin County Code of Forces, amending the hiring and fitness requirements for firefighters. Chief uh Hutcherson.
Just Chief Brewer, I'll be presenting tonight. Uh, good evening, court members. You all may well be aware that the Fire Department has a hiring ordinance that sets the minimum qualifications for new firefighters as they come in. As part of our um recruitment process, we review these uh documents periodically and. When comparing to surrounding departments that we're competing with, there's some changes we decided that needed to be made. The main change is uh lowering the age. Currently it's twenty-one to forty years old. And we're looking at changing that to the eighteen to forty years old. The um, the other verbiage in there relating to. To the waiver um for full-time employee or full-time firefighters within the state of Kentucky for the CPAT. That's currently a waiver that's in place. We just thought we would put it in writing into the ordinance, being as we're doing the revision.
Okay, it does the city, Brian, uh, hire eighteen year olds?
I believe the cities is currently nineteen years old.
Okay.
Um, there's been several other departments that we reviewed and many of them are eighteen years old.
Okay, Squire Muller.
Hey, Judge, thank you, uh, Mr. Brewer. Question, so eighteen, what does that do with our insurance for driving vehicles?
Well, the Fire Department currently has um requirements that everyone must meet before they can um. Operate the emergency vehicles, so they would still be required to meet that standard. Um, many years ago, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the insurance aspect. But I know many years ago, actually, when I was hired, that the hiring age was eighteen. Uh, at some point during a previous uh chief's era, it was changed to twenty-one. Um, but I don't know one hundred percent all the details of that change.
So Brian, I I, this is a great question, Squire Muller. I asked, can an eighteen year old get a CDL license? Because you do have to have a CDL to drive a fire truck, correct?
Uh, we actually have a waiver. We have our own driving uh course that is uh all firefighters must pass to be able to drive an emergency vehicle. There's also a emergency vehicle course that they have to uh take that includes classroom portion as well as a written exam. That they must pass.
Judge, I'd be curious. I'm pretty sure our company, you have to be twenty-one to drive vehicles per our insurance provider. That would be a holdup. If anyone knows that of.
I can check into it, but this is a first reading, so.
That's a good point. Yeah. Squire Blackbird.
Chief Brewer, were there any, is is there any other recommendation, recommended changes besides the age?
Um, the only other change that's documented in here is the uh. Words speaks of the applicants who are currently firefighters within another department. If they're coming to our department, then we may waive the CPAT certification. Um, we also included in there about maintaining the same level of fitness of that CPAT certification. And just for clarification, the CPAT is a candidate physical ability test. It's a standardized firefighting recruit physical ability test.
Squire Sebastian.
Thank you, Judge. Assistant Chief Brewer, I just did want to ask a question about currently waiving. So that would be applicants from other departments who come in. Um, so what's the rationale? If they're applicants, they should already be meeting the standard.
Correct, and that's that's the uh what allows for the waiver. If they are currently with uh employed as a full-time firefighter with another department. Um, but for some reason that our department, our department appeals to them more and they apply and are hired. They would, since they are already serving in a full-time firefighter position, they would have already met that CPAT. Um, level of fitness, so the provision allows a waiver for that.
So this does not water down the applicant status in any way? Because, you know, you you want candidates that are meeting the apples-to-apples standard.
Correct, correct. Correct, correct. So if they are a full-time firefighter, uh, with it, with another department, uh, in a paid position, then they would have already had to meet the standard.
Squire Blackburn, do you have some?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
Judge Wells, if I could, uh.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Address the, the question by Squire Muller. During construction of fire station number 10. Um. It was determined. That fire apparatus are not commercial vehicles. That documentation is in the project file and I'm happy to provide that to the clerk. Um, for support, uh, of the fire department's request for the change.
Okay, so they're not commercial, but still we need to find out with our insurance provider if people under 21 can drive our vehicles, correct?
Now we can, we'll do that.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll do that. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you, Chief Brewer. Uh, the next item is a first reading of ordinance, the table of special ordinances, uh. Zoning map change for Franklin County Code of Ordinances for 53.5 acre property identified. Uh, as PVA map, number, number, and I will get to that, located on Manly Leestown Road from rural residential district to industrial general district IG. This is a first reading. Robert?
Yes, sir. Um, the planning commission held a public hearing on August the 12th, 2021. Um, and then on September the 15th, 2021, they adopted a summary of the evidence. And adopted findings of fact. Do, the two findings adopted were contained within the staff report and they are noted on page one of the ordinance. Um, there was an additional condition placed upon the planning commission's approval that a land use restriction be filed. Limiting the activities that could occur on the property. That's in accordance with KRS chapter 100.3681. The form of that land use restriction is in KRS. Chapter 100.3683. Planning commission approved this by unanimous, 10 to 0.
All right, somebody's got a dog.
Must be a cat outside.
Yeah, is it your dog, Robert?
Uh, uh, just four of them.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, let's get in, let's get into the discussion of, of this. Squire Moore?
Well, I, I don't, this is maybe off the subject, you just cut me off if it is, but it, it's. It's in my notes, I mean, in the, uh. The minutes from the meeting that the. About this at the planning commission. Uh, where it's. It's talking about. The zoning regulations. Apparently we have, uh. Have. Asked the commission to. Uh, change the comprehensive plan to. Uh. Let me find it here. To go with the form-based requirements. I remember talking about that, but I don't remember.
Am I sure we can talk about that, Squire? Does that?
Yeah, just cut me off if, if you can.
I don't think that's appropriate for the zone change, uh, that's on the agenda. Rick, I'll let you answer that if you would.
Uh, I, I, he, he's talking about a different subject.
Yeah, we can talk about it next meeting.
Well, that, that was not a part of the record, um, and if it's okay with. Um, with county attorney, I, I think that can be discussed because it, that wasn't part of the record and it, I think that's a general inquiry of, of. Some recent events that have occurred.
The, the concern and, and Squire Moore, I, I totally hear you on that. Uh, that was another one of those. Procedure on it. Call me and I'll remind you exactly how that went down regarding that request to go to form base. But I think the issue is that discussion of, of form-based versus. Uh, other code methodology is just not before the court on a special meeting. I think that's the issue.
Right, I understand. I understand.
But, uh, give me a call, give me a call.
Squire Tracy, thank you, Squire Moore.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, quick question. Will the Manly Leestown access point and/or entrance ever be used to transport inventory in and or out?
Ever? Ever?
Is that for me, Squire?
Yeah, that's probably.
Yes, sir.
Um, testimony provided at the hearing was that all, uh, product transport vehicles would utilize the 127 access. Point that currently exists, the road network to this 53 acres, uh, will be connected to the existing road network. Um, vehicles entering and exiting from the Manly Leestown Road entrance would be generally service and security vehicles. Um, but additionally, it will provide the much-needed alternate emergency access. Um, as opposed to the, the improved driveway that was, uh, required. Um, in the first zone change of the Dobner True Farm. So, hope that answers your question.
So to answer my question, it would be no.
Correct. Not a product, not a product.
Thank you. Uh, the next one, will any of the, uh, new warehouses be built? Closer to the adjacent homeowners than what are currently built?
Um, a, a site plan of the proposed building locations has been provided, both to the planning commission and your packet tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was a PDF image, so I was not able to scale the distance off. So I, I can only rely on, on, on what was provided as, as evidence in the hearing. However, uh, there could be some topographic. Um, elements that may require some light shifting or some reorganization of, of the warehouses being proposed at this location on this 53 acres, which would. Would be three additional warehouses. So. So, so until a, a true development plan, um, is. Submitted to the planning commission. You know, with engineer drawings, um, I, I cannot scale off. The proposed warehouses in relation to the existing warehouses.
Okay, thank you. Judge, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Um. This property will connect to the current, uh, property as you all see. What I'd like to say about the, uh. The, the developers, they've done, they've done everything they've been asked to do. Uh, they've been great, great neighbors. Um, and. I haven't received any complaints. Uh, to, to my knowledge, they go over and above, so, uh, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Squire Booth?
I have a comment too. So, Trace. Whatever they want, we should do for them.
Be careful now.
This is certainly within the purview of my comment.
All right, thank you. Any, anybody else? All right, Robert, let's move on to the next one. This is a strange one. This is, we rarely see this one. Authorization approved of resolution. Denying the rezone of 55.172 acres of property located at 850 Hickman Hill Road. Robert?
Yes, sir. Um, I would like to start out by saying that due to a conflict of interest. Uh, my office utilized the agreement that was executed between the Franklin County Fiscal Court and the Bluegrass Area Development District for. Planning and technical services. So therefore the Bluegrass ad, uh, Michaela Jerry. Did the analysis and the presentation to the planning commission and will be presenting this resolution to the court this evening. In addition, I would like to say that there has been a request by both the applicant's attorney as well as, as an individual property owner. Who opposes the project, that their attorney had the opportunity to address the court as well. Um, and, uh. It's at the court discretion as to whether or not you would like the attorneys to, to go first, or if you would prefer the ad staff, uh, to provide you with a summary.
Uh, it, it'll be my discretion that I want Michaela to go first and then we will bring Counselor Sparks in to address. Mr. Billings and Mr. Cecil's request.
I would remind the court and those who are going to address the court that the matter for consideration currently is set forth on the record and the record only. And I know I sound like a broken record, again, using the same phrase. But. The, 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 the matter before the court by definition is limited to the, and all zone changes limited to the, uh, report and testimony. Elicited at the commission. So the same rules gonna apply, although this one's backwards in old fashioned. We just, and they know where I'm talking about, and I know counsel knows what I'm talking about, but they have to keep it, keep it narrow.
Okay, Michaela, you go first and thank you and welcome. You, uh.
Thank you.
This is new for you and, but thank you for being here.
Uh, happy to be here. Um, all right, the Franklin, Frankfurt Franklin County Planning Commission held public hearings on July 29th, 2021. And adopted a summary of the evidence and findings of fact on September 15th, 2021. Um. The board or the commission found that three findings of fact that the current RA zoning is an appropriate zone district for the property. The proposed AG zoning is not in agreement with the comprehensive plan and that there have been no major changes in the area that were not anticipated by the comprehensive plan. Um, so with that, they, they did recommend denial of application.
Do you remember what the vote was, Michaela?
Yes, it was eight to one.
Eight to one, okay. For denial, okay? Before I bring Mr. Cecil, Mr. Billings in, are there any questions for Michaela? Squire Sebastian?
Thank you, Judge. Um, I did want to ask in regard to reviewing the material. The staff report was to approve, uh, you as the regional land use planner from the ad approved the zone, zone change. Request, uh, we had, there were several residents that spoke in favor of the zone change request. We've had several of these. As a matter of fact, there may be, uh, some, some attorneys on here. Who in the past were supportive of these type of zone change requests, going from rural residential to ag. Matter of fact, we just had one and now it's turned upside down. And I didn't see a lot of distinction in material that we've previously read. Uh, and the material we're reading tonight that create the, uh, the ruling that we have. I, I just want somebody to shed some light on that to, so I can understand why the decision was reached that was reached. That would just help me prepare for, for when we actually have to vote. Thank you in advance.
Yes, ma'am. Um, well, well, I would just fall back on the findings of fact for, I don't want to speak for individual commissioners. Um, as far as the findings of fact, the staff believed that it was in agreement with the comprehensive plan, but the commission found that it was not in agreement. With the comprehensive plan, there was quite a few members of the public that were expressing, um. Weren't expressing support for the application. Um, they had some concerns about, uh, potential traffic, potential uses of the property. Um, were the primary points of discussion from my memory. Um, I will fall back on the minutes as far as. What the members of the public were saying. So, um, I mean, you can read my report as far as what.
I did, but as I understood it, and, and I heard Counselor Sparks say tonight, we're not supposed to consider the conditional use. We're supposed to see if it conforms with the zone change. Counselor Sparks, this is the same process, correct?
That's correct, ma'am. There, there, there'd be dragons, but, and the point is, the proof is the record as well.
Yep.
Don't take your hand, I'm saying, the issue is to stick in to the record.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh. Mr. Billings, you were the first one that I heard from that you, you have a request to the court.
Thank you, Judge Executive. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nathan Billings. I'm an attorney at Billings Law Firm in Lexington and I represented the applicant. At the original hearing in July and then the subsequent hearing in September, um, which was closed for any comment at that time. My request tonight is simply that I'd like you all to move to open up and have an evidentiary hearing. Um, and, and to have argument, um, on the, uh, motion before you tonight. While the planning commission did recommend denial to you all, they committed, I believe, several mistakes. Primarily swayed in answer to your questions, Squire Sebastian. Uh, related to objections from neighbors, this is in the record, objections from the neighbors based on what's currently going on in the property. As permissible uses under the current zoning. And their objections did not have to do with a zone change. It actually had to do with the current things. I, going on the property and the planning commission was improperly.
Hold on, Mr. Billings, uh, uh, uh. Counselor Sparks, I don't believe we should. Allow. I, I think we're going in the wrong directions. I believe we just should hear from the attorneys asking for what. And not going back into the public hearing itself. Am I right or wrong? I don't, I don't know what we can accept and can accept, but this is testimony on, on. In the case itself, and I don't think we should be hearing that at this time.
If I understood Mr. Billings. Argument correctly. And, and it's, it's difficult to argue in a vacuum. He is requesting, uh, a further fact finding hearing pursuant to 10213. Or 213100, I always get them upside down. Uh, which you may do, and he's claiming, much like was claimed in, in other cases. That, uh, somebody didn't get enough of a hearing or whatever. If there are any evidentiary problems or there's any procedural problems, there are appellate rights, et cetera, you know, so with all due respect, Nate, and Nathan knows what I'm talking about. Litigate them, good luck. But I didn't hear so much as he was arguing of error in the pellet format. He was saying that he wanted a hearing to bring out what he considered more, more appropriate additional testimony. I don't want to speak to Mr. Billings or for Mr. Billings.
Well.
Or I think for Mr. Cecil, but that's all I heard him saying so far.
In this court, uh, Mr. Billings and Mr. Cecil, I will allow you to make a request and only request, and please do not go into the case itself. Please make your request.
Judge, by my, uh, uh, I represent, uh, one of the, uh, property owners who's against, who was against the rezoning at, uh, at the planning commission. We would request that the, uh, uh, fiscal court rely upon the record, the extensive record that was created at that hearing. And rule on this, uh, this, uh, resolution based upon that, that extensive record and the findings made by the planning commission.
Thank you. Michaela, do you have any response?
No, I, I don't at this time.
Okay, so Mr. Billings and Mr. Cecil, here is going to, the, the, our process has and will continue to be, we will take this to a vote. If the vote, uh, is in agreement with the denial, then that will end the process. If the vote is in, uh, contrary to the agreement and, uh. Then the four will be open to the, the squires to say they would like a public hearing. They would, they, they will have several options. One would be to call for the, uh. A transcript. The second would, then once the transcript would be reviewed, then they could go and ask for a public hearing. So, we're going to let the vote dictate which way we go and the vote will come up in just a moment. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, judges, we won't be voting on this tonight.
That is correct. And so.
It's a resolution.
No, it's a resolution, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a resol, it's not an ordinance tonight. My, my clarification is we're, we ask for the evidentiary hearing. We don't intend to call new witnesses. We do.
Your Honor, I would check anything else. We, we've already had the statements here about.
Both of you, I highly respect you. I promise you, just let us, let us go through the way our fiscal court works. And that process is based upon the vote. Let us finish the vote and then we'll, then we will allow you, uh, if it is, uh, deny, if it is. Help me, Rick, what would that call? It's not a, if it goes along with.
Okay, everybody just, just, just enjoy the ride. It's a good time. Here's the deal. What you have to consider. What you have to consider is a confirmation, what is before you to consider is a confirmation of the planning and zoning commissions finding that it, uh, non, or that, that a zone change is not merit. If you do so, that is if you vote in the affirmative, and the affirmative vote means you, you uphold as is planning and zoning commissions result, then it's over, matters resolved, you go on about your day, next case. If you believe that it was inappropriate and the motion fails, then you're faced with a full-blown consideration of the underlying, um, zone change, and that's probably going to, that's going to necessitate some further actions. But the matter before the court today, and it's unusual in this extent because it is a confirmation of a denial. So when you vote yes, you're saying to uphold planning and zoning's denial. It's a little bit different than what you faced before, but it's basically the other side of the same coin.
Okay, so with that being said, from the squires, are there any questions from the squires? Seeing no more questions from the squires, we're going to continue on with the agenda. So Mr. Billings and Mr. Cecil, we will be having a vote in just, well, I hope in just a few minutes, but, uh, hang in there with us. Thank you, and I, I apologize, but we, we want to keep this procedure set up the way we normally handle it, okay? Thank you for bearing with us. Okay, the next item on the agenda is authorization to add two streetlights to the county multiplier with the plant board in, uh, on inheritance subdivision on Twin Pines and Waterford Circle. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. The Heritage Neighborhood Association has been in negotiations with the Frankfurt Plant Board for the placement of two different streetlights. One would be located between 304 and 308 Wheeler Drive. The second streetlight would be between 108 and 112 Waterford Circle. The association has agreed to incur all costs associated with the installation of these lights and are requesting that the fiscal court incur the monthly utility costs uh, for the electric on these items, which would run approximately $2.90 per month for each light. Um, installation would be at no charge to the county or, or any materials incurred. Um, I'm recommending approval and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Rob, Robert, uh, I'm really shocked, eh, but pleasantly shocked that these new LED lights are that much cheaper than the old bulbs because it, normally those streetlights were around 10 to $12 a month, and this one's down to $2.00. That's amazing. That's a great savings for our community.
Yes, sir, you're correct. Um, the price has dropped dramatically and, 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 you know, thanks to the neighborhood association for, for being willing to, to incur the cost of materials and installation. It's, um, you know, this is, it, it's wonderful for the neighborhood to have additional lighting. I know everyone's going to appreciate it. So kudos to the neighborhood.
Squire Blackman?
Yes, thank you very much. Robert, uh, how long ago did they inquire about getting streetlights?
Uh, well, I was not involved in their discussions. I would assume it's been within the last month or two.
Okay, thank you.
But there, it was them that, that did all the work. Well, Robert, you didn't do any of the work to, to get any of this, did you?
No, sir. I, I, uh, was unaware of this situation until I received an email from the plant board, uh, just a few, uh, last week, uh, asking if we would add this to the county multiplier. So truly, I don't know how long the association's been working on this. But the, the, uh, the estimate is dated October the first from the plant board.
Thanks, Robert.
Uh, Squire Booth? Squire Booth? Here, meet.
Oh. The, uh, the neighborhood association, I guess. They asked the people uh, that are, that the lights are going to be next to, about their opinion, I guess. Is that right?
They did, yeah, they did.
Okay.
Yeah, they got approval. And I think that's something that Squire Blackman, I believe, I'm sure you were going the route of, it's been very difficult out in a certain area, uh, in, in your district and, and I don't bel, in there, whether it's an issue that the people didn't want it in their yard or, uh, so I don't even have to go into it. I'm just, I thought there, there, and I know there has been some, some type of an issue out there, but whatever. So, uh, any other questions on this? Okay, next item, uh, and authorization to prepare, prepare, submit a joint application with the city uh, for the United States Economic Development Administration's grant program for American Rescue Plan Act, travel, tourism, and outdoor recreation for spell, sports fields improvements at Lakeview and Capital View Park.
Yes, excuse me. When, uh, when I heard the presentation by the Economic Development Administration about this new grant program that was created because of the pandemic, um, the first thing that jumped into my mind was a mutual goal that I had seen come out of our discussions with our, uh, park, park consultants and that I had seen in the city's plan and that both of those referenced improvements needed at the ballfields in order to attract more tournaments and hopefully spur more sports tourism. So I reached across the river to my counterpart Rebecca Hall and, and said, what do you think about, uh, a collaborative application? Because that's what was being encouraged by the EDA. She said, I think that would be great. Literally the next day, I got a phone call from Tourism and Economic Development saying, has the county and city thought about submitting a joint application for this grant program? And I said, well, honey, you should say that. So, uh, we had a conversation and also, uh, had a Zoom meeting with Andy Seth, who's a consultant in DC about his outlook on this particular grant program. We then arranged, um, a Zoom meeting with Bertha Parton, who's the EDA representative for the Atlanta, the eight state Atlanta region, and spoke to her, and she thinks this is a good project. She thinks that, uh, we should shoot for a project with a scope around 3 million because in the eight states, there's been about 24 million appropriated. So that's a good amount. So what we would like to do is submit a joint application where the scope for the county would be, uh, 1.5. The scope for the city would be 1.5, and that would be put toward lighting the sports fields at Lakeview and Capital View Park as well as some additional improvements. Uh, Charlie's, uh, indicated he would like to see the beginning of installation of some synthetic turf. I believe the city's talking about some possible restroom improvements. This particular grant program, uh, requires a 20% local match of cash and/or in-kind. Uh, but the more that we decide we want to, uh, fund the project, the higher match will actually give us better points. One good thing about this EDA program, usually EDA grants are tied to job creation. This particular program, excuse me, references the negative impact that the pandemic has had on tourism in your community. They also really like capital cities. So we have a number of things going for us. We have really good tourism information from Robin Antonucci, as well as these two wonderful master plans that have been and are being developed that point to that as a goal for both city and county. And one of the results of collaborating on this and marketing this for sports tourism, it would actually give us a larger amount of lighted fields than anyone in our region. So potentially we could attract some very large tournaments, and Charlie's been reaching out and gathering information, tournament information that we, our historical information, as well as what might possibly be able to be attracted to Frankfurt and Franklin County. The other really great thing about this particular grant is that we would identify Frankfurt and Franklin County as a tourist destination. So it would be promoting sports tourism, but also promoting everything else that's unique about Frankfurt and Franklin County so that we could attract families to come and stay and revisit Frankfurt and Franklin County because of what we're able to do. So that's what I'm asking authorization to enter into a joint application with the city for this grant. I believe the city's going to discuss it on the 18th.
Questions? All right, uh, Squire Tracy?
Thanks, Judge. And obviously, uh, as everyone knows and is aware, we're going through this master plan and should be getting an update, I think. What, November the 10th, 9th, 10th, 15th, whatever it is. Um, so and we've heard all about the, the updates and stuff to the softball fields and, and so forth. Um, how will, and I know Charlie's identified lights, so how will other upgrades be identified, uh, of need per se?
Uh, that would be, that would be definitely up to, uh, the park committee, I'm sure with Charlie's recommendation. The problem with this particular grant window is it's already open and projects are being funded as they come in. So Ms. Parton let us know that we have to have an application in by November 1st, or we really shouldn't bother sending one. So, yeah, that's why we're trying to go ahead and take advantage of this opportunity and hope that we can get some funding. And as you know, lighting is extremely expensive, and there probably won't be a lot of extra money available once we get that done, but we may be able to do a little something extra, whether it be some synthetic turf or some restroom improvements. But, uh, we will, uh, outline the scope of what we expect to do with ballfields in a general manner so that we can be a little bit flexible about that.
Thank you.
Squire Blackman?
Thank you, Judge. Um, Scotty, I know you and, and, and Michael are on the, uh, park committee. Um, have, has, has the, uh, park plan, I know we haven't seen it yet. Uh, I haven't seen it yet. I know that, uh, getting, getting lights on our fields is huge and it's important, but, uh, it, you know, right now, me where I'm at with the information that I've gotten, I'm seeing a cart and I don't see the horse yet. Um, I just want to know where we're at. What are your all's thoughts on the committee? Um, is this an area that they've indicated we really need to do? And, um, I know our part on the county, the city, I, you know, they don't even own their ballfield, so I, I don't want to go there, but, um, what are your thoughts? What are yours and Michael's thoughts?
Go ahead, Squire Tracy.
JW Lights, obviously, the diamond fields have been, uh, been identified in the project as needing upgraded. I'm not sure putting lights on fields are going to make us a sports destination town. Um, in listening to the, uh, to the Hitchcock Group, I, I'm, I'm not sure about that one. Um, I do appreciate the fact that everybody's starting to jump on and, and realize that sports tourism is, is, uh, is, is big, is a big revenue source. So I am, I am glad to hear that people are jumping on board with that. But, you know, I think with the park project, um, the one point, I think it's the 1.5, it's, it's not going to go far. Uh, obviously, we know, um, she mentioned synthetic turf. If, if we could get all four fields lit, uh, with the new LED lights, um, and get some, some upgrades probably to the bathrooms and, and more than anything to the fields, uh, you know, you got, um, safety, safety issues, you've got shade. We could go on and on about the, the needs of the, uh, of the softball field. Um, but it's a, it's a start. So, but yes, to answer your question, softball fields, lighting has been identified uh, in the master plan as needing, as, as the fields are needing that.
Thank you, Scotty.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Annie, let me ask you something that, uh, something that we don't have, and I, I meant to ask you this the other day when we, um, if there's monies left over, can we light the volleyball, the sand volleyball? Because they, that's, lights are needed there as well. If there are monies left over.
I think this would be specific to the diamond fields because it would be, it is the sports tourism revenue for the, uh, you know, local economy that this particular grant program is aimed at. Um, so I think it would have to be restricted to those fields for this particular program, but we can definitely look for some additional grant opportunities for some of those improvements as well.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions on this one? All right, let's move to the next one. The, uh, this one is authorization to prove a reappointment to the US 60 Water District, Wayne Morris. They, uh, I received a, uh, a letter, a request from the board, uh, I can't remember the chairman's name, but, um, asking that we reappoint, uh, Mr. Morris to this, to the US 60 Water Board. Lambert, I believe you know Mr. Morris?
Yes, I'm the one that recommended him for this, and he's, he really enjoys being on there.
Okay. Any questions? Squire Muller, I did not receive any other applications, if that's what.
That's fine, Judge. I'm just curious if you or Squire Moore could tell me, how long has he been serving on this board?
It, it's just his first term. He just finished his first term, I, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
He may have finished.
Somebody else's, I think. Replace somebody.
But it's his second go around full-time, correct?
This would be his second, yes.
All right, thank you, Squire Moore.
Squire Sebastian?
I was just going to say, I, I know from Morrison, and I think he is fulfilling an unexpired tour for someone, so this would, term for someone, so this would actually be his first full term on this board, and he has expressed to me his desire to continue to stay. And, and I know him from other board service. He's a dedicated board member.
Okay. No other questions? Let's move to the next one. The next one is first reading of, of amendment number one to ordinance number six relating to the budget for the fiscal year 2122. Uh, this will, the vote will take place at our next meeting, but Miss Susan?
Yes, the primary objective is to, uh, amend in prior surplus funds to provide the allocation or appropriation for the Farmdale Sanitation District. The additional 50,000 is a contingency for transfers within the general fund, uh, that aren't specified yet. But I would say, uh, we are anticipating professional services, uh, will be, probably need to be funded and some training line items at a later date with budget transfers. Uh, the, the code that I put it to will work for a grant as well as a loan because it's identified in our uniform chart as distributions to other government agencies.
Squire Muller?
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Susan. Susan, will you be able to keep us up to date of, of that 50,000 kind of as it comes in? As far as.
What, what, what we'll do, what we'll do is amend it in as a contingency for transfers, and it sits there. And then we have to come, I have to come back to court and recommend budget transfers to specific line items.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, keep going, Susan.
Uh, the next item, I believe, is cash transfers. We budget for these, uh, every year because in particular, in the, the first quarter, we don't have, uh, cash flow within individual funds, and each individual fund stands alone. So we have general fund transfers to those funds that have shortfalls in the current year receipts and expenditures. Those are always, um, the, the fire fund is the top one, always jail fund, and then the sheriff's fund. Uh, so those are the recommendations, and they are within budgeted amounts.
Go on, Susan.
Yeah, yeah, the first quarter report. Um, we are actually pretty much in the same position we always are again in the first quarter of our, every fiscal year is that we're in the hole, uh, because we don't have any tax receipts yet. So once those tax receipts start coming in, then it turns everything around. We have a lot of upfront costs, as you know, with our insurance and our workers' comp and so forth. It's, uh, you know, about a million dollars right up front in July and August that we have to pay. So that, that puts us in a big hole, but, uh, that, uh, we are again in a very predictable location that we're, you're always in. I'll make one comment, uh, in refer, that may be pertinent to some of the other discussion tonight, that the current CPI, which is the, a benchmark that the Department for Local Government uses for a lot of its, um, uh, uh, information and statutory, uh, guidelines is at 5.4%, 5.4%. So going forward, you might be looking at a 5% CPI, I would say, uh, for the 12 months ending 2021.
Okay, uh, I saw where social security is going to get almost to 6%. Good for them, good for recipients of social security. The treasures report?
Uh, again, that's just a, the, the specific point in time when the packets go out and. Uh, again, that's just a, the, the specific point in time when the packets go out and it's a. Dynamic situation, so I don't have any real, um, surprises there.
Okay, payment of claims, anybody have any payment, any issues on payment of claims? All right, let's move forward, uh, to the, uh, uh, voting session, this is the Franklin County Fiscal Court Video Teleconference Special Meeting. The voting session for October the 14th, I think it still is October the 14th, but not by much, uh, 2021. And I'm not going to say that this was a five o'clock meeting, uh, but anyway, clerk, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Here.
Squire Blackburn?
Present.
Squire Muller?
Present.
Squire Tracy?
Here.
Squire Booth?
Present.
Squire Moore?
Here.
Judge Wells?
Here, would you please stand for the pledge, tonight's pledge is, uh, being led by Reagan, she's the daughter of Allison Taylor. And Reagan, thank you for being on, and here we go, we're going to follow you.
Hi, I'm Reagan Taylor, I'm in second grade and I go to Elkhorn Elementary. Would, I mean, well, would you like to stand up and say the pledge to me, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please have a good day, I hope you have a good day and enjoy your meeting and I hope you have fun today, thank you.
Thank you Reagan, I had your mother in school and you look a lot like your mother and I, we're very proud of you, I'm, I'm sure you're probably asleep and don't. And not able to know that you did a great job, but anyway, we, we thank you and, and, uh, mama, you, you, you have a lot to be proud of. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda and that's authorization for approval of minutes from our special joint meeting of September the 16th, 2021.
Don't move.
Second.
All right, motion, second, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization for approval of minutes from our public hearing of September the 20th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization for approval of minutes from our regular meeting of September the 24th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization for approval of minutes from our regular meeting of September the 24th, 2021.
So moved.
Squire, Squire Booth and Squire Moore. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to receive the county clerk's quarterly report for nine months ending September the 30th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Get that, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to accept the Elkhorn Water District's audit report for the years ended, ended December 31st, 2020 and 2019.
So moved, second.
All the roll.
Uh, Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to prove a resolution in support of the Frankfurt Plant Board's application for funding to provide internet service. For the underserved and unserved residents in the unincorporated areas of Franklin County.
So moved.
Second.
All the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Uh, I think it's a wonderful thing and, uh, I'm glad that we were able to, uh. Word it, word the, the funding source in a way that was agreeable to everybody and, uh, I vote yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Um, I too think it's a wonderful thing, uh, I would have probably preferred to see the project bid out. Uh, the judge stated tonight that other local providers were contacted about being the countywide service provider and was informed that. They were not interested in being a countywide provider, so I vote yes.
Squire Booth?
Present.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, and, and this is a great step forward to help our community because all of us know that this has been. A major, major issue and Squire Blackburn, as you said, with schools, with businesses, and this will help us with, uh, businesses. As, as we move forward in, in, uh, developing it, our development in our community and with jobs as well. So I absolutely vote yes. The next item is authorization to prove a proposal from the Johansson Group for a job valuation and compensation study for all county government departments. Uh, and I'm going to take out, it's not for elected and.
Elected official employees.
Elected officials, employees. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Second, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Uh, I, I'm going to vote yes on this, I think this is something we can do to help our employees. It brought another issue to light that we'll be dealing with soon and I think that was a good thing, we can do, handle two things with this. I vote yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Um, I absolutely think that, uh, letting our employees know that we value them and we want them to be paid according to, to. The benefit that they bring to our community and, uh, I do believe it's a good, a good price. And, uh, this company's done a lot of, of, they did the plant board, they've been working on other, other people in the, in other counties in the state, so I vote yes.
Squire Muller?
Uh, hopefully employees know that this fiscal court here stands behind them and, uh, this is a good thing for everybody, yes.
Squire Tracy?
After tonight's discussion, I think it's clear that this court can't change decisions that were made in the past. Um, however, moving forward, we do have an opportunity to make sure that all county employees are accurate, accurately compensated for the job they perform and the skillset they possess. Uh, the you versus us, us versus you mentality is for birds, I'm excited to hear that a teamwork approach that includes the committee members being involved in the process is great. I vote yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
I don't think anybody supports our employees more than I do, but I'm a no on this.
Judge Wells?
I, I want to say, uh, I'm, I'm going to vote yes, but I want to say that this is the, this is the first step. Uh, in the process of, of paying our employees what they deserve, what, and, um. Our employees are the backbone of our, of this government and all of you know that, you've all acted that way tonight in your vote and in other ways too. So I thank you for that fiscal court and I, and I look forward to the next step, which is the most important step. Where we equalize and look at the true payments, salaries that these employees need and should get. So with that, I vote yes, next item is authorization to receive an amended report of the audit of the current Franklin County Sheriff. For period ending January 7th, 2019 through December 31st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Uh, I'm glad that we, we received clean, clean minutes and I'm a, I'm a strong yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to prove the sheriff's 2021 amended revenue bond.
Second.
Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to declare the sheriff's property, office property as surplus for disposal, a auction with the proceeds. To go through vehicle maintenance line, to the vehicle maintenance line, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, okay, Tamara, this next item, um. Do we vote not to do this? I'm not sure why, how this is.
You can take a vote, you didn't seem to have the consensus there, you can remove it, you can take a vote, it's official, do whatever you want.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what you just said, do we have to take a vote on, does the court want to vote? Uh, authorization to purchase a sculpture located at the Franklin County Judicial Center in the amount of 15,000 from Josephine Sculpture Park?
Judge, can't remove it from the agenda, we do that frequently.
Thank you, let's just move it from the agenda, thank you.
Okay.
All right, the next item, authorization to prove a resolution authorizing the county judge executive to execute all documents, documents necessary with the Farmdale Sanitation District. To provide funding assistance up to $200,000 for repairs to the Cool Brook, Cool Brook subdivision treatment plant.
So moved.
Second.
All the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes, for health and safety reasons, we need to do it.
Squire Blackburn?
Uh, the cane was kicked down the road a long time and I think we've got some board members that have really put their feet to the fire and, and getting busy and. I've even heard it and it's not even near my district and, uh, we got to do whatever we can to keep our community safe and healthy and I vote yes.
Squire Muller?
Need to keep our streams and waterways clean, yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Well, I'm glad Squire Muller mentioned the streams and the, because there's farmland around, uh, Cool Brook. That needs to be protected as well, so I vote yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 31 official, officials and organizations sections point 01 firefighter, firefighter qualifications. Of the Franklin County Code of Ordinances by amending the hiring and fitness requirements for five, for firefighters vote. Will take place at the October 28th meeting, so this is the first reading. Okay, the next item is the first reading of an ordinance amending the table of special ordinances, section one, zoning map changes of the Franklin County Code of Ordinances for a. 53.5 acre property identified as PVA map number 060-00-00-024.01. Located on Manly Leestown Road from Rural Residential District RR to Industrial General District IG. And this vote will be taken on, at the October 28th meeting. The next item is authorization to prove a resolution denying the rezone of 55.172 acres of property located at 850 Hickman Hill Road. From Rural Residential A District RR to Agricultural District AG.
Judge, could I ask counsel just to define what, what we're doing here, the yes and no, because he wanted to make sure, it's been a long night. I just want to make sure everybody understands how the vote goes.
A vote, if a vote approving this resolution confirms the decision out of planning and zoning and no further action is taken. If the vote doesn't pass, then you're sort of back to square one about the process to overrule or have your own matters involving. Planning and zoning recommendations. This is no, it's, the vote today, if you vote yes, it approves the denial talk.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Squire Booth, was there a second? Squire Blackburn, all right, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
No.
Squire Blackburn?
Um, you know, I think it's strange that, uh, almost every single rural residential, the ag proposal's been passed by the planning and zoning board. But this is in the heart of my district, I've had overwhelming public outcry and, uh. I represent the people in my district and I'm going to vote the way that they asked me to, so I vote yes.
Squire Muller?
Uh, I was contacted too, and not in good ways, um, I think I must stick with staff on this one, but no.
Squire Tracy?
I need to recuse myself.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yeah, I'm kind of, uh, conflicted on this one, uh, I'll say no.
Judge Wells?
Yes, so the motion ties?
Fails.
Fails, the motion fails, yeah, okay, all right, then, so now I bring the lawyers back in and, uh. The lawyers, uh, are requesting that since this failed a public hearing, um, and once, one is requesting public hearing and one is not. So, um, is, is it, is the court amenable to get a transcript and see a transcript from this? Uh. First, and then make a decision after you've seen a transcript.
See transcript.
Okay, the transcript?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, Robert, how long do you think it'll be till we can get a transcript in?
Um, at least two weeks.
Okay, so it probably won't be on the 28th agenda then, it will be, uh, the 19th of November, hopefully we'll have a transcript by then. At that time, uh, the transcript then will be, we'll review that and decide whether we want to have a, a public hearing, Squire Muller?
Uh, yeah, this is, I guess to Michaela or Robert or, or counselor, why is this in a resolution form instead of ordinance?
Because, oh, I, I can answer that unless, unless somebody else wants to.
No, go ahead.
It's because it's not an action. That was presented to the court in the form of a recommendation to deny, you would not have a first reading on a non-action. It's a, it's a parliamentary device, basically, where you have to have motions to do something. And there's no thing to do before the court because the recommendation was not to make the change. If you would have made a change, and that's ironic, this brings us back to circular issues on matters involving ordinance changes. If there is no action, there's no first and second reading. So because they didn't recommend a change, you wouldn't have a first reading of zone change. It's a, you're confirming their decision, now you're faced, and I'll ask Robert what the timeframe is, about an action, if you're going to overrule it, you've got to have a grant. You just didn't ratify it, that's why I said this is weird, uh, because it's affirming a negative.
And so a three, three tie goes to the negative?
Three, three tie doesn't pass, you've got to have majority votes pass.
Okay, didn't pass, all right, yeah, right.
And that, that, that's why you said about resolution forms opposed to ordinance, that's that reason.
So this being a resolution, does it, well, it, it doesn't pass, so, um.
It do best.
There a time limit or anything on this thing? Does the time limit still stand or?
Robert says yes it does.
Yeah.
December the 15th, December the 15th is the 90-day time limit.
Okay.
Yeah, you got time to squeeze in two readings if need be.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Mr. Cecil, did you want to say anything? I, I see you, but that's, I'm, that's, you heard the vote of the court.
I did, uh, Your Honor, I, I don't think, um, any comment from anyone at this point, uh, on the public is, is really authorized under the applicable statute, so.
Uh, yeah, I think you're right, thank you. All right, okay, so we've got, we've got our orders on that one, uh, the next item on. Uh, the next item on the agenda is authorization to add two streetlights to the county multiplier with the Frankfurt Plant Board in the Heritage subdivision, the Twin Pines Street and the Waterford Circle Street. Our motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Squire Booth, you have a second in your district?
Second.
Alright, motion is second, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Next item is authorization to prepare and submit a joint application with the city of Frankfurt to the United States Economic Development Administration's Grant Program for American Rescue Plan Act, travel, tourism, and outdoor recreation for sports fields, improvements at Lakeview Park and Capital View Park.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Oh. I had one question that I forgot to ask. So our matching fund, will that be coming out of the general fund? Our match will be coming out of the general fund?
Yes, that's correct.
And it could be in kind service too.
That's, yes, that's right.
Okay, yes.
Okay, Squire Muller?
I didn't see the future of our park, yes.
Squire Tracy?
Um, I believe we're a long way away from being a sports destination town, but we're on our way. Yes.
Squire Booth?
No.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Next item is authorization to approve the reappointment of Wayne Morris to the US sixty water district with a term ending September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, I think.
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Twenty-twenty-four? I wanna make sure of this one.
Oh, it's on the order.
Okay, everybody got that? There was a mo- motion and a second?
Okay, who made the motion, sorry?
Squire Sebastian, Squire, uh, Moore made the motion, Squire Sebastian seconded, and let's make sure that date is correct.
Yeah, I will. It's on the order. Alright.
What is it?
Twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-twenty-five, okay.
For your term.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. The next item is first reading of, uh, amm, of Amendment Number One to Ordinance Number Six, twenty-twenty-one relating to the budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. The vote will be taken on October the tw- at the October twenty-eighth meeting. Next item is authorization to approve cash transfer for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Next item is offers, authorization to receive the treasurer's first quarter financial report for period ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Okay.
All the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Next item is re, authorization to receive the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Second.
All the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yeah.